Good afternoon, welcome everyone. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, the committee will hear bills number 22-0081R, In attendance for members of the committee, I see Councilman Conway of the Fourth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Ryan Dorsey of the Third District. Councilman Antonio Glover of the Thirteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Oded Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Also representing the Council President's office, we have Nikki Thompson, Director of Legislative Affairs.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also representing the Office of the Mayor, we have Nina Themulus, Deputy Director for Governmental Relations.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And also in the same office, Avia G.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Let's begin. Bill number 22-0204, Vacant Structures 311 Complaint Fines for the Purpose of Establishing a Fee Structure for Repeated 311 Service Requests, Providing for a Special Effective Date, and Generally Relating to Fining the Owner of a Vacant Structure for Repeated Service Requests. This bill was introduced on March 21st, 2022. This bill was sponsored by President Mosby. Councilmembers, any comments at this time? Hearing none. We're going to start with Representative Nikki Thompson for this bill, representing the Council President's office.
Thank you, Vice President Middleton, Chair of this committee. Good afternoon, committee members. Again, Nikki Thompson for Council President Mosby. And we are here to give an overview of the legislation that we have before us, which is intended to target those vacant property owners who have vacant properties. They're in violation of various neighborhood nuisance abatements and allow for us to just expand or add an additional toolbox in our arsenal of being able to address the over 15,000 vacant properties that we have in the city, 3,000 of which are owned by the city. And so our intention behind this legislation, it's crafted after similar legislation from a neighboring jurisdiction in Montgomery County. They had a similar issue, obviously less vacant, but in 2017, their council unanimously passed a similar ordinance in order to increase the fines. So it increases, on the table that is in the bill draft, it increases the fine amount up to $15,000 for a substantiated 311 complaint. So substantiated 311 complaint. I know we have had a number of hearings within this council about what substantiated means, how we go through the 311 process. So we are intentionally using language within the city code to define what a substantiated 311 request is, so that it isn't in line with our existing procedures. We are not intending to add any new types of structures. We are just wanting to expand on the current authority that ECB has to address some of these nuisance property issues specific to vacant, trying to specifically target those vacant property owners that are neglectful and just sitting on the properties that are causing an eyesore and a number of other community issues. Any, I think that's it, that's all we have? Anything else?
Thank, thank, excuse me. Thank you.
I can't hear you.
We'll, she'll pull the mic closer.
Pull the mic closer?
Yeah, as you speak.
So that is pretty much the summary, and I will turn it back over to you, Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. Before we start with the agency reports, I just want to give another reminder again that, you know, the committee is still, needs to be getting these agency reports in a timely manner. They're still coming at, sort of say, the last minute, and committee members need time to read all of the reports, amendments that come in. We need this to happen in a timely manner, and we've, we're kind of starting to get them last minute again. So could you please get that message out again that, you know, we, this particular bill was introduced back in March, and it's a very important bill, and a lot of decisions and changes have to be made. We here on the council are here to make changes, change laws, change rules, change regulations, and when you give, we try to give you a really good amount of time to submit things, and giving them to us one, two days ahead of time is still not enough time for review. Today, we have three bills that we're, you know, we have to listen to and make decisions on. And we pretty much have three, four, six bills just about every hearing that we have. So it's very important that we get reports, whether they're in opposition or favorable. We need the report. The executive branch is the one, or you're the group that does the execution of these bills. And we know it takes time for you to format and do this execution, but I just respectfully ask if you could just respect us and give us the information in a timely manner. And moving on with this one, we'll start with the City Solicitor's Office, and I know you do, you have an amendment as well.
Yes, Madam Chair.
There you are.
Sorry, it's Hillary Ruley for the Law Department. Yes, the bill is fine. We had three small amendments. One's a typo, one's to put it in line with the Charter, and one was a may to shall. So three small amendments set out in our bill report, and otherwise, we would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. I will also say that I know Councilwoman Ramos has some amendments she might be proposing. I've reviewed those, and those would also work and be approved for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you for your approval of form and sufficiency. Department of Finance, Mara.
Good afternoon, Mara James for the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We oppose the legislation based on our discussions with BCIT and Housing and ECB, the Environmental Control Board. We estimate that this would have an implementation cost of $260,000 with annual costs of at least $110,000 for personnel and resources.
Thank you.
In addition, we would defer to BCIT and Housing and ECB on whether or not 311 system has the capabilities to manage the program as laid out. But we would estimate that there would be to be a new system that may cost 500,000, I mean 50,000, apologies, $50,000 annually, depending on the specifications, with $140,000 in one-time costs. In addition, Housing anticipates needing additional personnel, at least one position, and then we would need to see over time how this could increase resource needs for ECB as there could be more hearings and appeals. In terms of revenue, we're not able to give a clear revenue estimate from this based on needing clarity around the considerations of data, but also, we would anticipate low collection rate as the city already struggles to collect payments of other fees and taxes from vacant properties. So that was our fiscal analysis. We lay out some other considerations, which I believe the other agencies will also speak to, but generally, just questions about whether or not 311 is the proper source of data for this program, issues in the bill about revoking a vacant structures registration within just 10 days, and then the questions of how increasing these fees could actually disincentivize investment in vacant properties. And here to answer any questions, thank you.
Okay, we are gonna, I'm sure there's questions, and we'll start with the sponsor.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Vice President Middleton. So my, can you all hear me? Am I close enough? Okay, thank you. So my first question is to the point of disincentivizing. If you could just provide a little bit more information on how, what that analysis looks like, how you came to that conclusion, since there wasn't a inclusion of analysis on the revenue aspect of this fee or fine, my apologies.
Certainly. So the way that we would consider this is that we would see growing outstanding liens on properties. And what we see is that the properties could actually have higher outstanding liens than the assessed value. And so investment in acquiring those properties, we have very limited options in the city to abate those liens. So in terms of having properties that it would be worth the investment for private developers to acquire, this could lead to properties being not worth that investment in that way. They could have, the value, the property could be valued at, let's say, 15,000, 35,000, but have liens for citations, including possibly increase from this program that could be greater than that, 50,000, something along those lines. And so we see that in our tax sale annually each year with properties that are underwater like that.
Is it possible for us to have that follow-up provided to the council for us to have a good idea of maybe if we can approximate number of properties that we can just have a better idea of what the full landscape looks like? Because I appreciate the hypothetical. I just would like to have something more, just more sharper for us.
Yeah, maybe we can clarify what the specific request of the data would be. Thank you.
And I'd like to recognize Councilwoman John Bullock of the Ninth District, member of the committee as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Councilwoman Ramos, question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The report didn't acknowledge the fact that we now have this new system called INREM where we can now foreclose on these high liens, which I think is, we would not be able to.
Closer.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you. We, the, the bill that was passed by the council unanimously prior to 2002, 0207, which was our bill to increase the fines, and this one are very similar in that regard. I would be interested to know, because we're about to move into full-fledged INREM, how the Finance Department is now looking at these kinds of things based on the fact that now we have this new system.
We did mention in our report that there is the new system for INREM, but we know that it's just getting off the ground and understanding, as you know, the process, getting some of the issues worked out and understanding the timeline for that. So as we're seeing that process work out and seeing how quickly properties can move through that process, we're going to have that be informing and thinking through how we look at these.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate from a statement I just made. Again, this is legislation where the executive branch are the ones that should be talking and working to implement with the help of the council. Any other questions to Mara, Nikki?
Thank you so much, Vice President Middleton. My next question is, in the report, it suggests that 311 service requests may not be the best data input source. Are there any suggestions, if not from your agency, any of the other agencies of what a good data source would be as a possible alternative if 311 requests are not sufficient? And if you could just give a little bit more detail on how that conclusion was made?
I would have to defer to our other agencies.
Councilman Conway, question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one question. You mentioned that in the report that it's not likely that we would collect any additional fees to sort of recoup the costs of operating the program. For our current fees on vacant properties specifically, do we have a sense for the percentage of fees that are actually collected?
I can get back to you with that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you want to answer us now, or after Housing? Any more questions for Finance from the committee? Moving on to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. Jason Hessler, Deputy Commissioner for Permits and Litigation with Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined here with Kimberly Rubens, who's our Chief Policy and Partnership, and Commissioner Kennedy. DHCD, we stand by our bill report, and I'll just read a snippet here. DHCD recognizes the blighting influence city-owned and privately-owned vacant properties have on our communities and the hardship they can impose to or on adjacent residential properties. However, we have practical and organizational capacity concerns around the complexity of enacting a requirement to find an owner of vacant properties on a sliding scale for repeated 311 service requests. Imposing the graduated fee schedule would add additional administrative burden, complicate the likelihood of rehabilitation, all the while it remains unclear if this legislation would compel a property owner to abate the vacant building notice more expeditiously than we're presently seeing. We are, DHCD is committed to implementing the 30-day vacancy recommendations to reduce the number of vacant properties that's been developed by the Scott Administration Vacant Property Work Group, which is being led by CEO Shorter, and is comprised of senior officials from the Department of Housing, Community Development, the City Solicitor's Office, Department of Public Works, and the Department of Finance. Particular issues that we have around the bill, many of the properties that are the problem vacant properties have deceased owners or defunct business entities. So increasing fines would not create a situation where those deceased owners or defunct corporations will move that property to rehabilitation. Second, we already have a system where we can fine property owners for failing to abate the vacant building notices. These are $1,000 citations. In practice, we can issue those on a regular basis to implement change and get a property either rehabilitated or transferred to someone that can rehabilitate the property. So adding this more complex system of needing to analyze additional data, manipulate the existing systems, both 311 and our internal systems, is just a complicating factor that's not necessary. The bill talks about adding into the definition the word unabated, which is unnecessary. A, a structure is either a vacant building, has a vacant building notice on it, or it does not. So the change in the definition is confusing. And then the penalty that is imposed here with the striking of a property registration would suggest that property registration is something that benefits the property owner when in fact, it's a requirement imposed to help the city locate the property owner. So it would only harm our initiatives to fine property owners and get them to rehab or transfer the properties to someone that can rehab instead of assisting us by suspending that right. So for, for those reasons and the complexities of implementing the program, we would respectfully request an unfavorable report on the council bill. Thank you.
Question from Council, Councilman Stokes.
I don't know if it's for Jason Hessler, Commissioner Kennedy. What is the total amount of fees? It might be a request to, Chairwoman. What is the total amount of fees due for vacant building notices? And can you break it down by neighborhoods or zip codes?
That's something we would have to get back to you with, and I think I would need to get a clarification of exactly what you're, you're asking.
The total amount of fees due from vacant building notices? And can you break it down by neighborhoods or zip codes?
Okay.
And Chairwoman, this is a request.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well noted. Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question about the component about revoking the property's registration, that piece. I was a little confused as well when I read it in the bill, and I was curious, what is the penalty for not being registered?
So just to clarify for everyone that's not familiar, all dwelling units in Baltimore City that are non-owner occupied are required to be registered. If it is a dwelling unit that is habitable and you fail to register it, the penalty would be $100 citation. If the dwelling unit is a vacant building and it is not registered, it is a $500 citation.
I see.
And those are liens on the property. So if the $500 was unpaid, it would triple to $1,500 in approximately 90 days and be a lien on the property.
Got it, thank you.
Nikki Thompson.
Thank you so much, Vice President Middleton. So if possible, could we talk a little bit more about the existing procedure that DHCD Code Enforcement inspectors use? In your report, you outlined that there is currently regular and routine and proactive patrols in areas that are high-density vacant properties. What is the determination for a high-density vacant, vacant property? And then if you could walk us through what that process looks like so that we can have more of an idea of the effectiveness?
Certainly. So currently, DHCD Housing inspectors respond to 60,000 to 70,000 service requests per year. So the inspectors are responding to complaints from residents. Those vary from complaints of trash or high grass and weeds to a building not being boarded or just concerns over a vacant building. There are also, in that 60,000 to 70,000 would also be complaints from tenants about interior conditions and other items. So the inspectors are out doing that. If they see a violation, they have the ability to issue a violation notice or a citation. With our violation notices, once those are issued, they have a, it is a notice and an order. It's putting the property owner or responsible person, in some cases, it could be a tenant, or notice that they're in violation of the code and orders them to make repairs. Those notices get re-inspected on a schedule, depending on the type of violation, the location. So the inspectors are going back to those several times a year to check and see if the violations have been corrected or not. In addition to that, the inspectors are also looking at areas that have been marked with a high level of vacant buildings, and that, that really is using the housing market typology data to determine those areas. So we're zoning those areas where potentially people aren't going to call in and complain about a building being open or there being trash or high grass and weeds because they don't see the response or they're not, they just kind of, you know, don't think anybody's going to come out on their call. So in areas where people call, when there's a candy wrapper on the ground, we're not patrolling those areas. But where we know that buildings could be opened up by somebody and resident calls and then just kind of gets tired of calling because it keeps happening, we're patrolling and actively looking for that. And so the inspectors will put in work orders to have those buildings secured, have the grass cut, have the trash picked up, issue notices if a notice doesn't exist. For vacant buildings, once the vacant building notice is on the property, we have the ability to issue a failure-to-abate citation. And a citation is something similar to a speeding ticket. So, you know, we see you at the time in violation. You can either pay the fine or request a hearing. Those citations are $1,000. They are a lien on the property. They would ultimately, if unpaid, would double to $2,000. In addition to all of that, from the enforcement standpoint, we have the ability to file receivership actions against the vacant buildings. This is an action in district court to take the owner and everybody that has an interested, interest in the property to court for the owner to, and those interested parties to show that they have the ability to abate the vacant building notice or get out of the way and allow receiver to be appointed to auction the property off. In those situations, the receiver will qualify the bidders, get the property prepared for auction, auction the property off, and the new buyer is expected to rehabilitate that property under permit and get a use in occupancy. Other enforcement tools outside of really code enforcement fall really more into like the Development Division and our ability to foreclose on properties where the, there are outstanding taxes owed on the property. And so that would be the traditional tax sale foreclosure or the newer INREM process. Both are tax sale foreclosures that go through the Circuit Court, whereas receivership goes through the district court. The INREM is a little bit different because we can follow those cases at the point in time where the debt on the property outweighs the value of the property. So if the liens on a property amass to a point where they outweigh the value, or the value of the property is reassessed and now it's below the debt, we don't have to wait for the tax certificate to be prepared and use that to foreclose. We could just move forward with the INREM process. Working with the administration and CEO Shorter and the Law Department, we have approached the courts, the Circuit Court, about improving on this tax sale process, particularly in the INREM situation, so that we could streamline it. We've been following tax sale foreclosures for many years on vacant properties that are deemed abandoned or seem abandoned, nobody's taking care of the properties. It's, it's a regular tool that we've used over the years. However, based on the volume in the Circuit Court, our cases are mixed in with all the other tax sale foreclosures, and they moved very slowly. With the, that was one of the items that was identified in the vacant work group. And we've worked with the administration, the Law Department, and the Circuit Court to streamline a process so that these cases should move a lot faster through the Circuit Court. I've seen some of these take as long as a year to two years, and the process could be as little as five months, I would say. We have, our Development Division has filed some of the first cases of INREM, and so we're working through that process, and we'll have a better understanding in the next several months as to how it works. I think we've identified, is it 600 properties that are, yeah, at least 600 properties that would qualify for INREM and make sense for INREM at this point. So we've been working with council and the communities to identify properties and identify the best tool, whether it's receivership or traditional tax sale foreclosure or INREM or demolition or eminent domain condemnation.
Thank you. And in, just a quick follow-up, because I had previously asked Department of Finance that question of if 311 service requests are not the best data source, is there another data source that would be better for implementing some type of program? Because I guess my follow-up from what you just shared is if we are looking at a timeline of best-case scenario, five months, worst-case scenario, years, I guess what is the state of the property in that time in between? Is there, are service requests still being made? Do we ever see that circumstance where service requests are still being made on properties while they're in the midst of waiting on whichever procedure DHCD decides to move forward with?
Right. I mean, that's, I guess, part of the problem with how, how the bill is presented is that, you know, service requests are called on properties for all kinds of reasons. So the bill doesn't break out any particular type of service request. So a property the bill doesn't break out any particular type of service request. So a property could get a service request for high grass and weeds, or for vacant building, or for a water leak, or a number of other things. Anybody can make those service requests, and we respond to those. So if a service request comes in and the complaint is that it is a vacant building, that's going to be a substantiated complaint because we have a vacant building notice on the property. It's not changing anything. And so, once the vacant building notice goes on the property, we still get 311 requests, we still investigate those. We do take appropriate action. If the building is open, we request it to be boarded. If the building has been dumped upon, or the grass and weeds have grown up, we ask for it to be cut or cleaned. And then we work through our strategic process on vacant buildings to move them forward and get violation notices abated. Earlier, it was discussed, you know, there are 14,614 vacant buildings in Baltimore City as of this morning. Of those, approximately 1,200 are owned by the city, and the majority of those are owned by the city for a particular project. Either we're preparing to demolish those, or packaging those for some sort of development. Those that aren't in that area, for the most part, are available for sale. There are, I would say, 3,000 properties about that are under active rehab right now, and they will not be vacant in a year. But there is a large chunk of properties that are, that need some sort of intervention, and that's where the in-rem and the receivership and other code enforcement tools come in. But additional 311 calls aren't going to get them to that point any faster. It really is a market issue. So as far as the question of like, is there a better dataset? No, there isn't a better dataset because how the bill is drafted and the desire to get the properties rehabbed sooner, isn't going to happen with this bill. The tools already exist to get properties rehabbed as quickly as possible. Where it falls short is really the resources in the market to be able to move more properties faster.
I have three council members in this order, Ramos, Glover, and Stokes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just a couple of things. One is, I was honored to be a part of all those conversations with Judge Carrion and trying to get the Circuit Court to streamline the process. I'm super, super excited about in-rem and the possibilities. I'm just thrilled about it. Which is why the fine, I'm going to call it a fine structure, the way that this bill had started with, it seems to me, because one of the things that we've been doing with the fact sheet that we had on in-rem, and we're sending it around to communities, you know, there are communities that are very interested in identifying properties that are in-rem-able, let's use the verb, okay? And then, for those that are not, the way that they can take action is to continue to call 311, get the $1,000 citation, and in this case, then also add $200 and $300. What we're seeing, since the passage of my bill and signing of it from last year, is that owners who are alive and understanding that this is an issue are either selling the property, or they're letting it go and we can in-rem it. Those are good outcomes, right? Either one is a good outcome. We heard during the hearing on my bill earlier that, you know, we're seeing, community organizations are seeing that folks are saying, oh, I've got too many fees, and I want to, you know, have the community association or community development organization, you know, buy it or sell it, or do something with it. Again, good outcomes. So, just wanted to emphasize that I think the escalating, I'm going to call it a fine structure, because there's a difference between fee and fine, I think is important, and I want to support that piece. What I think I've provided in the amendment, which I will go over whenever the Chair allows me to do so, is to try to address some of the issues that the agency had, particularly around this idea of the registration, right? The registration is critical. I mean, I go onto CodeMap and I can see, you know, information. If I don't have information, I can get Director McGinnis to give it to me, and then we can try to find the owner and try to do, you know, so the, most information is extremely important. So, I agree with that piece. So I had two, saying all of that, I had two questions. One is, the date of the report is April, but we just got it Friday. And it wasn't, this is the DHCD report, and it wasn't, or maybe we got it earlier and I didn't see it, but it wasn't posted to the Legistar, but, and it wasn't updated to reflect the $1,000 citations and the excitement that we have around in-rem. Can you talk a little bit about what happened there? Because one of the reasons my amendment is late is because the report was late.
Unfortunately, Councilwoman, I don't have information as to that, to respond. I know...
Okay, we need, we would add that to getting us a response, so we can talk about it at our next hearing. I think that's important.
Yeah, oh, thank you. I had just noticed the date, and so that's why I was wondering about it, yeah.
Just a clear example of, you know, why we need things in a timely manner.
Yep. And then, my second question, just real quick, is around, similar to what Director Thompson was asking about, the, one of the things that we need if we're going to do this escalating fine structure is a point at which it gets applied, right? And so, having it apply to all 311s or 311s related to houses is difficult, right, because of the nature of 311s, right? A lot of times, it's many 311 calls, and then it ends up with one citation, right? Am I correct, Deputy Commissioner? So that, or it could be two or multiple citations, but usually the 311 says, okay, Inspector, Inspector Odoms is our inspector in town, Inspector Odoms goes out, he sees, you know, 1707, 31st, 32nd Street is, you know, the back is falling out, he already wrote a citation already, but he's going to write another one, right? Because that owner, whom I know, still has not, you know, addressed the issue. But there's also a work order that gets in, there's also, so there's multiple things here. So it seems difficult to put the escalating fine structure on all of these things. Don't you think that putting the escalating fine structure on like one or two types of citations makes it a little easier to monitor, but also it still has the same purpose, which is to continue to escalate the fines so that we can get this into in-rem, or that there's a, there's, they sell the property?
Right. The problem with any of the escalating fines is the actual implementation of it structurally. The, as the bill is drafted, the 311 escalating fines would be extremely difficult because of the two different systems, and that they're not set, neither system is set up to do something like this. I know we're not on the amendment, but that was shared with me earlier, and that, or any other data point really, still requiring an escalating fine system where you're having to track what visit you're on, what has, you know, previously occurred at the property, and then adding new amounts. Sounds simple in a discussion, but when you really get into the implementation of it, and having a housing inspector have to take the time, and a system to be able to deliver that, it gets to be very complex and very time-consuming, and would be impossible for us to deliver with our current systems, and would take a considerable amount of time to implement with any kind of new system. And what we'd end up seeing is the inspectors not getting to as many properties in a day, because they're going to be doing more paperwork. Where, I think you're, the intent of the council is, where appropriate, more fines should be issued to properties that aren't moving, or nothing is happening, so that they could get to the in-rem stage sooner. And I think that we are, we've heard that, and we've begun implementing that. I pulled numbers before I came over, and this year, so far, we've issued 3,463 failure to abate vacant building notice citations, compared to 830 at the same time period last year. And I don't have the exact numbers, but I had looked at this, I think, last month or the month before, and that 830 number is a rather consistent number over the last four or five years of how many of these failure to abate citations we issued in a year up to this point. We heard the council earlier this year, in like April, and we began implementing a different strategy around the vacant building notice citations. And part of that is that the original creation of the vacant building notice citation and its implementation was not to move properties to in-rem because in-rem didn't exist, or to move them to tax sale foreclosure. The citations were created to shake the tree and get all the loose fruit to fall. So, we would issue the citation, first, actually, we would issue a warning letter saying, you're going to get a citation in 10 days. That gave the owner the chance to contact the agency and say, well, hold up, here's what I am doing. I know you don't see progress, there's no rehab, but I'm working on a zoning appeal, or I'm trying to find a contractor, or the financing, and provide evidence of why we shouldn't start fining them and hitting their bottom line. When they didn't reply to us, or their reply was less than satisfactory, the first citation was issued. In many cases, that went unanswered. But in some cases, they would call at that point and say, whoa, what's happening? I owe, at the time, it was $900 until recently increased to $1,000. What's going on here? That would start the conversation of what the city needed to see on this property. If we didn't hear from them after the second one, or after the first one citation, then a second citation would have been issued, and the case would have been referred for receivership. At which point, we would have analyzed it to see if the market supported receivership. If the property was in foreclosure, or bankruptcy, or there were just too many vacancies on the block that nobody would be buying and rehabbing, receivership wasn't really an option. But what that allowed us to do is to continue filing a lot of receivership cases, as well as, you know, dealing with properties that should be able to be rehabilitated by the property owner, and they just needed a nudge. We've shifted that to this in-rem process, where if you're not doing what you need to do on the property, you're going to get a citation, and another citation, and another citation, and eventually, your debt's going to outweigh the value of the property, and in-rem becomes an option. And in between there, receivership may be something that we do, or one of the other tools.
Thank you. Glover, members Glover, Stokes, and Bullock, and then we're going to move on to the rest of the agency reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So what I'm hearing from you are a lot of agency burdens. My ask of you is, what about the community burden, because of the fact that we're not using these properties, and we are still having to deal with these issues in our community?
Code enforcement, you know, is what we do every day. And vacant properties are what we look at every day, and we understand the impact that a vacant building has on the neighboring property, on all of the properties on that block, the properties across the street, the kids that walk to school, the people that drive down the street, the vision of our city. Like, we're committed to doing the work it takes to remove vacancies and bring the properties into productive use everywhere we can.
You know what, I heard, I heard that so many times throughout the years of me living in East Baltimore my entire life. And I've seen many of these vacancies that are here now, that were there when I was, man, 10 years old, 30 years. They're still there. So my problem is, and the issue that I have, is that it appears to me that black and brown communities are really not getting what is really just to them, meaning affordable housing, opportunities for our children to walk down the street to their neighborhood school, to see beautification. What we're seeing is a lot of empty vacancy homes in our community. I really need you guys to step up to the plate. This is serious, man. This is really, really serious. It is, it's, it's really hard for me to believe a lot what has been going on with housing, only because of the fact that, of the failed leadership that I've seen in the past, that has made honest agreements of making sure that our communities will be thriving, they'll be strong, let alone to have corporations and the establishment come in and dictate to us what we need in our communities. And that's to oust us out of our communities. I really need you guys to step up to the plate. I really need us to go after those landlords that don't live in our city, own properties in our city. Grab those homes, we need them. We need them for folks here in Baltimore that want to stay in Baltimore, to be able to rehab and live here in Baltimore. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Did you need a comment?
That's it. Thank you.
And then we have Councilman Stokes.
What software is HCD using to track vacant building notices? I don't know if we can give that to housing or IT.
I can, I can respond to that, Councilman Stokes. DHCD currently uses a program called, referred to as CHIP. It's the Computerized Housing Inspections Program. So it's in, it was built in-house by DHCD, and launched in 2004. It was our response to all the violation notices being generated and issued in the legacy system. And there was, you know, not really any other program out there that could do what we needed to do, and the legacy system was extremely cumbersome. So, that's a program that we currently use. It not only tracks our vacant building notices, but it issues all violation notices, all citations that DHCD issues, as well as a number of other things.
My follow-up is, if this bill passes, are you anticipating getting different software to handle this new bill we're talking about now, from the Council President's office?
Well, not, not related to this bill, but we are looking into evaluating the current program and what other programs exist out there to modernize. Because as I said, you know, we've been using this software since it launched October 28th of 2004. So, you know...
Okay. And my last question, this is for finance. Can you anticipate what the cost would be for the mainframe modifications? Because I know finance has been talking about it's going to be costly. Can somebody answer that question?
I would defer to BCIT on that. We got some of the cost estimates from them in terms of the new system and any updates for linking those.
I can hear you, I'm sorry.
I would defer to BCIT on that. We got estimates from them on the system costs that we have in our report.
Good afternoon. Leila Layman for the Baltimore City Office of Information and Technology. So we did look at the mainframe costs. We could absorb those internally, it would be relatively nominal. It's really the system changes to the... It's really the system changes to the, if this were to go to housing rather than 3-1-1, that would be the, the cost. The one other piece, if I may add, is right now the bill is for a three-month implementation time to do those mainframe as well as the HCD implementation. That would be more like six months.
And can I be a request, Chairwoman, that we get the costs for the mainframe modifications? Thank you.
Noted, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I wanted to commend our colleague, Councilwoman Ramos, for introducing this bill. As you know, well, I'm working on it, but what I will say, the amendment, yeah, thank you. But what I will say is that vacant housing obviously has been a challenge for us for quite some time in this city. I know housing folks can remember about six years ago when it first came on the council, we had a lot of conversations and one of the first questions that came up was around the fine structure and how that might be effective. And part of the pushback was that we don't have a lot of folks who are actually paying the fines now and that's a big challenge for us. And then also looking at some of the markets where there isn't a lot of high demand. Now, moving forward, obviously, we have some additional tools. You mentioned in-rem, we think about some of the other things that we are allowed to do at this point. But I am curious as to what percentage of the fines are actually being paid at this point? You'd already mentioned the 16,000 or so vacant properties in the city and I know we have about a third of those in the 9th district, but I'm curious as to how, what, can you tell me a percentage of the fines or that are actually being paid at this point, roughly?
I believe that Councilmember Conway asked a similar question. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, because I think that would be helpful in terms of this conversation, helping inform, you know, whether this process will be effective and to what degree we need to be looking at not only the, the structure of this implementation, but also what we can expect from a financial point of view, what we're dealing with now and what we'll be dealing with in the future. So I appreciate you taking note to that, that request.
Thank you. And Councilman Conway, and then we'll finish the agency reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I was sitting here listening, I had a number of thoughts, one of which was one of the major things that I think maybe this bill is trying to accomplish is adding some additional costs to speculators, folks who sit on our vacant buildings for decades. I think, I don't know if we have this available or have any sense of this or have done this estimate in the past, but having a sense of the breakdown of the owners of our vacant properties, a sense from how many of those are city-owned, how many of those are LLC speculators, defunct LLCs versus active LLCs, individual property owners, deceased owners and otherwise. I think that'll tell us a lot about who is actually going to receive these fines and what they are likely to do once they receive these fines. It'll tell us a lot about that. And then I think the other question that I had sort of tied to that is the fee schedule and how it works. And I guess, I'm not sure if Nikki can answer this or if the agency can answer this. The fee structure begins on the second violation within a 12-month period. But the question that I had, and as I saw this amendment passed around by Councilwoman Ramos, was does it continue beyond that 12-month period? So, once we've reached the $1,000 and we get to our 13th month, do we start back at a warning and then have to once again do the, you know, $100 or whatever the secondary level is?
Councilman, I don't have the, the breakdown in front of me for your first question as far as the property ownership, but we have looked at that and just off the top of my head, I know about a little bit over 7,000 of those are owned by individuals. There's about 300 or 400 properties, when I looked at it, that we could clearly identify as deceased owners. We believe that there's many more than that, but the, my methodology for doing that, I was looking at whether or not our notices were issued to a person that then the inspector had added deceased afterwards or added estate to do that. So, that's where we've done an investigation and then added that estate or that information to a notice, so it's not in the property records. I think it's like, the next largest group is LLCs. It would get more difficult to break down whether or not they're, I'm sorry, not LLCs, but business entities, so any kind of business entities. And that was around 5,000, so it gets a little bit more complicated when you're trying to figure out whether or not they're defunct, forfeited LLCs or not, because you'd have to look up those individually. But then it, it continues to break down and, you know, there's, there's about 100 properties that are owned by religious institutions that are vacant buildings. So, we've, we've done that, we've, we've looked at that stuff as part of strategizing on how to best tackle the vacancy problem and what resources to bring to bear. As to your second question, just based off of similar legislation, because there, there's a, the false alarm program runs when that kind of 12-month cycle. It would be a 12-month cycle, so you would, 13 months into the program, you would look 12 months back and see where you stood and issue a citation based on that. I think that the problem may be that it's not, the legislation doesn't say, sorry, 10-plus or...
Yeah, it doesn't say so clearly in the legislation, but if we did...
Something like, if we go forward, it would say 10th and after would be $2,500 to make that clear. So, but, but normally we, and that's one of the complicating factors, because then you're constantly looking back 12 months to see what's happened and adding additional.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And just something that I want to mention, you had mentioned a number of citations that, you know, you give and so on. Have you ever set up meetings to call in some of these people just to have the conversation about the, has there been like in-person, sit-down dialogue, "Look, this is what is going to happen next?"
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I started my career out as, as a staff attorney in Northwest District, so I had lots of those conversations in my career, but I still have them as a deputy commissioner where we'll, we'll sit down or we'll call people up and be like, "Look, here's, here's where things stand and your building is vacant, it's on a, you know, this, this is what's going on in the block, you're the person holding it down. How are we going to correct that?" And so, I, I used to discuss, you know, when we were looking at like, "How many cases did you file?" I would constantly be like, "Well, I filed this many cases this month, but I also made this many phone calls and I think I may have resolved this many more issues by just a phone call." So we do do that, the attorneys do that, the housing inspectors do that. The entire system is built around trying to make contact with the responsible party so that they understand that having a vacant building is a violation, is a crime, does carry penalties and that, you know, they need to work on the property and in the meantime, secure it and clean it and maintain it and visit it and register it and do all those things. So, from the housing inspector worn up, we make that an effort to try and, you know, not have to take as many cases to court.
Thank you. I want to, I know the Office of Information and Technology did speak, is there, and you deferred to housing, is there anything else you would like to add?
Good afternoon again. I think I covered it, the high-level things were, one, the record, the source record really should be DHCD rather than, than 3-1-1 system. Two, length of time, right, more like six months. And then Department of Finance covered the costs, so I think that adequately captures us. Thank you.
And also with the Environmental Control Board, Brittany, did you, I know it was no objection, but did, you can speak if you have some additional information.
Thank you. Sorry, I did not choose the best desk. Good afternoon, Vice President and Councilmembers.
Do you have to speak up a little louder? Or you can remove your mask for, if you'd like.
Great, thank you. So, yeah, I would mostly just reiterate what's said in the report, which is, we're set up for hearings, so we can absolutely facilitate that. We would need additional resources, not knowing what the volume would be, it's hard to say. Also, the bill is, it doesn't quite explain the functionality of it all, so, I mean, if we're just having hearings, it's one thing. If we're sending out notices and the late fees and collections and all of that, that would require more staffing and more resources for something like that. The only other thing that I mentioned, or besides 3-1-1, us not being sure if that's the appropriate system, but I, I don't use it very often, so I defer to BCIT. Besides that point, my concern is the interplay of all the different mechanisms already in existence that Jason Hustler has mentioned, because people do get quite confused when they have a vacant building notice and they have a citation and they've gotten a miscellaneous bill and they don't quite understand the difference between things and they're trying to get it, each thing resolved, but they're conflating. So adding an additional 3-1-1 fine might be confusing and I know my staff is tasked with explaining those things and we've become adept at explaining those things to people, but that is another layer that I just wanted to note in my report. I did briefly read Councilwoman Ramos's amendment. I do want to say that that falls more in line with what we already have for other violations. I believe maybe plastic bags, they also have an escalation after a certain amount of months, the, the amount goes up. So, that would be easier for us to implement, the amendment, because it falls in line with what we already do or how we already do things. The only other thing I would mention about Councilwoman Ramos's amendment is that it would be probably the highest dollar amount fine. At this point, the fine is $1,000, which is the highest dollar amount fine. We have a few other $1,000 citations, but nothing higher than that. If we're adding on additional fines, it is going to be higher dollar amount and penalties do get added on to that. I don't really have any commentary on that, but I did want to share that it is going to be quite pricey. That's, that's it for me, unless anyone has any questions.
Thank you. On that note, Councilwoman Ramos, did you want to explain your amendment, which mainly deals with the fee structure, correct?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to thank DLR for helping me address this rather quickly, since we didn't get the bill reports till late, so very much kudos to our DLR as well. So basically, what we're doing in this amendment, and it's actually one big amendment, is we're taking the fee structure that was in the original bill, limiting it to just $1,000 because that's as far as we can go in the charter, which was in the Law Department's report, and putting it into existing code already so that we're not putting together a new 3-1-1 structure, we're not trying to, we're basically addressing the issues that were brought up in all of the agency reports and choosing pretty much one or two citations that the fee structure would be added to. So instead of all of the, you know, 3-1-1s, it would be specific citations and so those are the vacant building notice, failure to abate the building notice, which is now $1,000, thanks to my colleagues for supporting that bill. And also, high grass and weeds and other things are up at 250 level, condemnation proceedings. And then the fee structure kicks in. And, and to Councilman Conway's point, it's within that 12 months. So, if we have, you know, second offense within 12 months, an additional 100, et cetera, and then the clock starts over again, so it's stacking. It continues to stack over time. And again, the goal for me isn't an expectation that they're going to be paid. The goal for me is how can we make sure that some of these properties that are not in-rem eligible can be in-rem eligible quicker so that we can start the process of moving properties, particularly in areas that my colleague, Councilwoman Glover, had been talking about, because receivership doesn't work there, but we need to interrupt the, and create markets by having these block-by-block solutions where the city will then foreclose on the liens, take possession of the property and work with the community on how those blocks are going to be taken care of and redeveloped. That is the goal. So what my amendment does is just clarify and address all of the agency's concerns, but really focuses on making sure that that fee structure works, because that will help us accomplish our goals. And I realize that the department talked about, you know, the, the issue of additional paperwork and all of that, and I am certainly sympathetic to that. I want Odoms on the street all the time. So I think that, you know, if we are able to back end the bill another six months or something like that of implementation so that we can have a technological solution to that problem, you know, that would work as well. That's not in my amendment, but that's something that we can discuss. So, that's what we're trying to, to do here. So, it, it does, the, basically, the amendment takes it, again, the fee structure out of what exists in the bill right now, so we wouldn't take away the registration, we wouldn't have the late fees, we wouldn't have, you know, the additional burden on ECB, it would just be simply the escalating fines up to $1,000 every year and then the clock stops over in order to continue to stack up the liens. Thank you.
Okay. Question from Councilman Stokes and then Councilman Conway.
My concern is this is an amendment, but when you go into Oliver and Darley Park and you go on North Avenue, you go to South Clifton Park, you get a $1,000 fine, but guess what? All the people live there, ain't nothing changed in their neighborhood, absolutely nothing. So we can fine all we want. So Ms. Susie lives next door to eight houses and water coming in her house, they got no roofs, dirty yard, unhealthy, people living in the house, might catch on fire. My question is, when we get to this point, where is those poor black communities going to benefit from this? Because you're going to end up moving them out their own neighborhood because they probably can't even afford to be there where they at. So at the end, where is it going to benefit poor black neighborhoods in this city? I don't see that. Thank you.
Councilman Conway.
Can I answer that?
Councilman Conway, and then I'll come back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, we talked a lot about in-rem and I understand why it would be beneficial for the city to take control of properties, because it allows us to figure out what we want to do with it. I, I don't know if we touched on this and maybe I just missed it, but what is the threshold for in-rem to kick in as an option?
The property needs to have liens in excess of the value of the property.
Assessed value.
The assessed value of the property.
The assessed value. And do we have off the top of our heads an average value for our vacant buildings, just like the realm of, are we looking at 20,000 or are we looking at 200,000, it's not 200,000?
Director Thompson asked for a request for that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And then we'll go back to Councilwoman Ramos, you want to respond to Councilman Stokes?
Yeah, I mean, sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the opportunity to do so. One of the reasons why we pushed in-rem in 2018 at the state level in my previous work was exactly to address the issue that Councilman Stokes has brought up. There was no tool to address vacant properties in the areas that need it most. This is that tool. So, and I have been working hard with the administration to make sure that we are applying the tool and the other tools that we have in the areas that need it most. Darley Park, which is partially in my district, but I also am conscious of the work that needs to be done in Councilman Bullock's district and in Councilman Glover's district. You know, this is really an opportunity that we have to finally go to places and make sure that Ms. Susie has that vacant property next to her addressed. So, you know, that, that's not just from this amendment, it's really about, you know, if the property next to Ms. Susie, they, you know, every, they haven't had enough liens on it to be able to take it to in-rem, this fee structure would allow that to happen. And that's what's exciting to me about this, as long as we do it in a way that, you know, we're pinpointing one or two citations, which is what I have in the amendment. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing your amendment. We're now going to take public... We're now going to take public testimony. Those attending online, if you would like to testify, please raise your hand. And that's on this first bill, 220204. Raise your hand. See any?
No hands.
No hands raised. And now we're going to do, well, first let me check to see if there's any one in person here to testify on this particular bill. And I have one person that has signed up. I'm trying to recognize your spelling, so if I pronounce your name wrong, please forgive me. Is it Sharon?
Shiel.
Shiel. You want to come up?
Yes.
Oh, Ms. Seltzer. Your first name is Cheyenne?
Cheyenne.
Cheyenne, I'm sorry.
On April 26, there was a hearing regarding 15,000 vacant properties to be a Dollar House program. Urban, the name was changed somehow, and I testified that we could use it for reparations. I wrote a peace resolution, and I just explained what a resolution is. A form, according to the Black Laws Dictionary, a formal expression, intention, or decision by an official body or assembly, especially a legislature. Baltimore City Council, legislative branch of a government entity legislates ordinances, which are laws and resolutions. So essentially, this is a decision that was unanimously passed in April 3, 2001, of which several people became mayors of this city. And for nearly six months, I have continued to give out peace resolution, continued to email, continued to, I hand-delivered a very solidified plan regarding vacant houses, of how we can move, we can give reparations to Native people and the Afro-Americans. There's some that are still alive today. And I think what the city is afraid of is all this massive reparations. But I was talking about using the houses. This country still doesn't have enough masons, enough carpenters. Somebody after that, that hearing said, you know, I know somebody wanted to start a carpentry school, but he couldn't get the loan. This is a responsibility of the city, of whether it wants to continue to be a city or it wants to die. We're at that cross point, where we cannot, what it says, one of the resolved, is an exemplary peace city is a city that does not use or promote anyone or product hurting any of its citizens, chooses to concentrate its energy on mentoring, works with the vision that opportunity and prosperity is indeed a limited for all, integrates efficiently on allocation and conservation, and is not afraid to say compassion loves the central focus of politics. I am insulted. I am absolutely insulted, because my life has turned into being dedicated to being poor. $841, and I had to pay to get around somewhere, of which I don't get to go everywhere, because MTA dictates where I can go. It's segregationist, it's racist and classist, and the point of the transportation is that you keep people in poverty. You don't want to have people learn how to use their hands, which they're so good at, except they're rolling up doobies, they're taking cigarettes.
Ms. Seltzer, could you kind of?
Okay. So personally, it's not a for and against, but it's piddlings. I personally, and now Commissioner Kennedy knows this, and has, and learned, and somehow learned this in her college.
Can you kind of wrap up?
That.
A last statement, please. Thank you.
Okay. I won't embarrass, but I tried buy houses all over the city, and one of them was $5,000. And I won't embarrass the council member, but it hurt me. It hurt me to keep trying to rent from slum lords, giving all of the money that I had, and I...
You can submit your written testimony to the committee.
I don't have a written testimony, because I wrote another testimony for the next issue. But the thing is, this is from my heart, is that I had ratified contracts, and people took the ratified contract to sell to cash, and I can tell you, all over the city, every single house I tried to buy.
Your point is well taken. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
So I want, I want a hearing about my plan, to see if it can work.
Thank you.
At least give me that.
Thank you for your testimony. Now, I did have a sign-in sheet, but I see someone is standing that...
I did sign in.
Come up, come up to the mic.
Okay. I want to come up to the, I want to hand out, I'm here for solutions. Let me just hand.
No, dude, give me the pack, and you can go to the mic. And just a couple minutes, please.
Couple minutes.
Thank you.
My name is Barry Nelson, and I'm 64. I bought my first house at 20. What I've been hearing is about fines, 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 fines. What I don't hear is about solutions, right?
Pull the mic up.
And my experiences with Baltimore City, and the young man over there talking about our community as black communities, well, first of all, you have to take interest in your community to keep it strong. Us as black men and black people, we not taking that interest in our community, so I'm going to put that aside. But my solution is this, is that what I just gave to you is the Smith-Ideale Project. And the Smith-Ideale Project is in honor of Ideale Savings Bank, that was on Drew Hill Avenue, one of the first banks that gave money to people to buy houses in the city. And Mr. Smith is Gerald Smith, the attorney, that was a civil rights attorney and promote home ownerships in the city. And what this program does, first of all, my background is that I have property here, but I also volunteer for Habitat for Humanity, All Hands and Hearts. I'd be all in third world countries, volunteering, I own a house in a third world country. What I see in Baltimore doesn't have to be, it's about leadership, right? And it's about us investing into ourselves, into our community, into the youth, not finding. The way to get some of these properties, people don't even want them. You can just go to them and ask them for a lieu of deed, a quick, a quick deed transfer over. Well, these people give you their properties because they tired of the harassment with Baltimore City code enforcement, they tired of the distress in the community with drugs and abandonment, right? When I was coming up, people that looked like me had those corner stores, had those cleaners, had those supermarkets, Mr. Baines and all of them. But my generation felt short. So what the Ideale-Smith project is, unlike the vacant value, where you got one or two houses in a block that someone can do, and then all the block, you still upside down. What this is, is a revolving classroom.
The committee will read this.
Okay. Well, it's a revol, I want the people to know. It's a revolving classroom.
You're talking to the committee.
It's a revolving classroom, where you're going to teach the people in the community, the youth, how to revitalize their community, from acquisition to staging and selling, with the hopes that everything in between, they take interest to, whether it's plumbing, liquor, landscaping, real estate itself, appraising, anything. The kids haven't been exposed, like I was exposed in school, to shop, electronics, business, home economics, hands-on stuff. That's fair. And then another problem with the vacant property is that half the citizens is gone, right? So what this does, this puts everybody on an even scale. It teaches our youth about reviving community, homeownership, it teaches them trade, and then, when I was in the country before, when we had $2 million for the Squeezy Care Clinic, I did my research for the 700 block of Fulton Avenue, the east side of the block, 19 vacant properties.
So we have, we have, sir.
That $2 million could revitalize the whole.
We have your...
Okay, okay. I'm just letting the people know.
Last statement, last statement.
Revitalize the whole block, and create a tax base for the city, a safe habitat for the community, and teaches people at the same time. Okay? So that's all I come for, solutions, right?
Thank you.
We can't find our way out. And then, another thing, Robert.
Sir, go wait, wait, wait. Dropped your wallet.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We want you to keep that. Thank you.
One, one, wait, no.
No, thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
And just checking for some last callers.
Okay.
And, on computer. Thank you. This, this bill will go into recess, and we do have, we did have a number of things that need to be submitted for this bill to the committee, and also we need to review all of the amendments, and we will schedule another date for the hearing. And on that note, because Bill Number 21-0081R, Code Mapping and Decision Making, is so kind of related, in a sense, to this bill, I want us to hear this bill first, because I think it's going to be shorter, and then we're going to go ahead to the solar farming, which is a kind of another subject. The code, and I want to make this change, because code mapping is, you know, they do the monitoring of vacancies, and it's just so important that the committee, real, I think this is a good education piece for the committee. We, the city should really take pride in code mapping, and I want to thank Housing for taking the time to put together this really quick presentation. And for the committee, if you want to discuss longer, I'm sure Housing will accommodate that, if you want to discuss your individual needs. So, again, the next bill we're going to hear is Bill Number 21-0081R, Code Mapping and Decision Making, for the purpose of inviting the Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development to explain to the city council how the code map application and the data sets the application uses assist public and private decision-making and strategic planning in the city, and helps move the city forward. The sponsor of the bill was Sharon Green Middleton. The bill was introduced on November 15, 2021, and we're going now to quickly move, we'll let the city solicitor's office do your report, and then we'll move to Housing.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Jeff Hoxteller with the city solicitor's office. The law department has approved this resolution for forming legal sufficiency.
Thank you. And Housing, we have Kimberly Rubin, I think is the main person that's going to speak. But Commissioner, I know you wanted to kind of do an introduction. You know, I have been bugging you for a long time to, you know, do this kind of really introductory presentation, because I really think code mapping is just a very useful tool for all of our council districts, and I'll let you begin.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and good afternoon, members of council. Alice Kennedy, Commissioner for the Department of Housing and Community Development. Happy to be here this afternoon to talk about code map and how code map fits in with a number of different tools that we use when talking about strategy, whether or not it's dealing with vacant properties or community development, vacant lots, et cetera. I can say very simply, we at DHCD love code map. We think that it is an integral tool that is available to all of the, I see a number of city council members nodding their head here this afternoon. It is an integral tool that not only do we at the agency use, but our fellow city agencies utilize, our city council members utilize, our development partners utilize, our nonprofit partners utilize, as well as the general public, right? So we are committed to continuing to advance the technology behind code map. Director Rubens will go into our, Kimberly is our Chief of Policy and Research, and her team is the team kind of behind code map, updates that we've made in the last year. And we're committed to continue not just the education here today for the council, as well as public that is in the audience or watching online, but we also are committed to continuing the education. So we've offered training sessions for all the council members. We will continue to do those for any council member that would like to have kind of a dedicated one-on-one to, you know, go through code map. And we will also be, starting in January, an every-six-month training for the general public. We will do a virtual training, and DHCD will host it. We'll make sure it's announced, everybody has the link and get that out there for the general public, anybody that wants to come and learn about how they can utilize code map for the work that they do in their community. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Rubens to give a brief overview.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Hi, Kimberly Rubens, Chief of Policy and Research. This is my work anniversary today with the city, so it's a very exciting time to be here to present on code map, especially starting in the council president's office. So, code map and decision-making, I'm going to try to speed through this in the next five to seven minutes, and hopefully there'll be time for questions. All right, we'll go through a code map overview, discuss DHCD data tools, and also, most importantly, how these tools drive data-driven decision-making. So code map, this is a screenshot. I'll make just a general comment that at the bottom of every slide for all of these tools that I'm going to discuss today, there is a direct link at the bottom of the slide, and they will be disseminated as part of the public record for this resolution. Code map started in 2015. It's had, it's now on its third iteration. It takes data sources and data layers from approximately 40 different databases to create over 150 data layers that are used every day by our, by every division across the agency. Data is updated on a daily basis. For some of the layers that you will see later on, they're updated on an annual, biannual, or every-five-year basis, based on the program in question. One excellent feature of code map that is used by, I think, every councilperson in this room is property-level search. It's one of the strongest features of code map. So with this property-level search, you can look at citation history, permit history, receivership history, the demolition status, if it's a demolition status, if it's a completed or planned demolition, whether or not the property, if it is a rental property, is licensed to connection to ESTAT, a plat view, neighborhood data profile, aerial imagery, as well as Google Earth. And then if you, on the bottom, if you click on More Resident Info, it's a very helpful tool for residents to learn things like what district they're in, who their council people are, who their state legislators are, what their trash day is. So a great underutilized tool. Next, I also want to iterate and underscore that code map is just one of the many data sources that DHCD uses on a daily basis in its decision-making process. So there are many, many more data tools that we have at our disposal. This is a landing page for what we call our key DHCD tools. It is accessible through code map, and again, as I mentioned, there is a hyperlink at the bottom of the slide that people can use to access. I'm going to go through these tools fairly quickly. First is our key stats dashboard. It is updated three times a day. There are robust filter options. We review it during our weekly senior leadership meetings, and it tracks outcomes of our code enforcement and demolition planning. Next is our DHCD investment map. It is updated on an annual basis at the close of every fiscal year. We use it for our capital budget planning. It's a reference point to respond to spending inquiries. We get a lot of requests for how much money is being spent in a certain district, in a certain neighborhood, and on what activities. I also want to just take a minute to point out that this investment map is also an account of... an accountability tool for the agency to, um, ensure that we are implementing our vision for equitable neighborhood development, and this map shows that 90% of, more than 90% of all DHCD capital investments are made in formerly redlined neighborhoods across the city. This is our DHCD Project Tracker. This tracks all development projects across the agency's seven impact investment areas across the city. It is both a data-driven action plan and performance management tool used by our neighborhood development officers who lead our impact investment area working groups. Our neighborhood data profiles, these are updated annually, um, they are used to inform DHCD interventions. As Deputy Commissioner Hessler alluded to in his, his testimony on our, on the previous bill that we heard, um, interventions are neighborhood-specific and are driven by the market conditions of that neighborhood. So what, what, an intervention that might work in one neighborhood would necessarily not work in another, and so these neighborhood profiles help us make those decisions. VBN Change Dashboard, this came out of a partnership with State HCD to map, uh, investments and outcomes across, uh, priority areas across the city. So it's just a visual tool that can track vacancy trends over time. This is a zoomed-in screenshot of Reservoir Hill, one of our proof-of-concept neighborhoods, and so you'll see there is a, um, there is a positive change in this neighborhood. Uh, the dark green indicates that we have reduced vacancy on that block by more than eight VBNs. Next is our Housing Market Typology. Uh, again, uh, referenced in our previous, uh, in the previous, uh, bill, we use it to strategically match agency resources based, based on neighborhood market conditions. Something really exciting that, um, I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to come back and present to the council, uh, next, early next year, is that we are automating this tool. So it's been completed every three years since 2005. And one of the limitations is that because of the way the cluster analysis is completed, it's hard to compare change over time. So by automating this, we'll have live data, and that will allow us to, uh, better track neighborhood outcomes. Finally, uh, data-driven decision-making. How am I doing? Um, five minutes, okay. So this is a great summary slide of the ways in which we use our data tools, particularly Code Map, to drive decisions across the divisions. So, um, the DHCD senior team, how permits and litigation uses it, how the Development Division uses it. And again, as Alice mentioned, or, sorry, Commissioner Kennedy mentioned, um, Code Map is not just used by our agency, it's used by agencies across the city, it's used by, uh, I would say, all, uh, council members' offices, the mayor's office, uh, we just gave, um, and the general public. Um, okay, so one of the ways in which we use Code Map is to create our block-level planning for our impact investment areas, so we literally go in our drawing shape files over, uh, vacant properties across our impact investment areas to identify the right intervention. We use it for demolition planning. This is a, a screen grab of, uh, some of our demolition planning in West Baltimore, primarily Sandtown, Winchester, and our West Impact Investment Area. Uh, it's, as again, as I mentioned earlier, it's, uh, critical for property research. I'm sure Deputy Commissioner Hessler can attest to the utility of it and his team when they're doing, um, case histories for properties that they might be filing receivership on or other, uh, legal interventions. Um, Code Map is also used as a reference point for how we make our CDBG investments. CDBG investments are restricted to what HUD identifies as low and moderate area income. Um, these, this 2019 layer is the most recent layer available for HUD, and again, um, is how we decide how to spend more than $20 million in annual appropriations from HUD. This is a screen grab of our LED grant application that is based off of Code Map, so it's what the Housing and Home Ownership Preservation Team uses to decide how to do door-knocking outreach to let, uh, residents know that they are, may be eligible for a LED abatement grant, as well as track information collected when doing intake for those households. That is the end of my presentation, and I'll now defer back to Chairwoman Middleton.
Just a couple of quick questions. Um, I know that other agencies can, you, you work with them, is there, do you work with individual businesses or residents with, um, especially if they want to do some kind of housing project and development?
Yeah, so, um, one of the great features of Buy and To Be More is that you can get the Neighborhood Development Officer contact information for any specific property. So let's say an individual or a business owner or a small developer is interested in a property, they'll have the email and phone number for that Neighborhood Development Officer in our Development Division, and then that person can give them, using Code Map, a deeper dive into neighborhood characteristics, property-level information, walk them through how to do property research on Code Map. I'll also add that, um, our Director of Research and Analytics, Henry Waldron, puts his contact information on the, uh, About button on Code Map, so, uh, he gets at least two to three emails a week from people in the community who are interested in using the tool.
Do you track their project from like the beginning to end? I'm talking about the process, the bidding process, the permit process, the demolition and construction. Do you get involved that deeply?
Our team does not, that's what Slate is for, and that's what, um, we have eDemO for.
Okay. Does, excuse? That's okay. We'll save for testimony. And does BDC work with Code Map staff as well?
Yes.
Okay. Does the committee have any, any questions? Councilwoman Ramos?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, again, super helpful to have Code Map. I think I use it like 100 times a day, like if you track emails. Commissioner, he's agreeing with me. Um, so one of the questions that I had is that it's, it's such a great tool that has a lot of information, but it doesn't have all of the information, right? Like, we have, we can get, um, you know, whether or not a property is properly licensed, but then I have to go to a different link to get the actual registration and contact information. So are you, is the evolution of, of Code Map going to be such to try to integrate some of that? Um, you know, we also can't find, and this is, uh, something I've talked with BCIT about, you know, the lean information, right? Those of us who are interested in, um, InRem, and I know we have a tool to get people the information about InRem, but, you know, I end up having to go either to bother Mr. Scrivner, who is wonderful, um, but is probably sick of me, um, you know, what, to get additional information. So I, I'm just trying to, like, what does that evolution look like? I mean, I think it's a great tool, I don't, I, I, I think we, it's great, and we use it a lot, so just curious about sort of the, the rest of the information.
Um, thank you for those questions. So with licensing, I know there's a link where you can click on to see if the property is licensed. Can you clarify what you mean about registration?
Yeah, so the property, uh, as, um, Mr. Hessler said earlier in the meeting, in a different, uh, with the previous bill, to get, uh, registration information on a property, you actually have to go elsewhere to get it. It's not connected to the licensing page that you get.
Right. There are currently some limitations as to what information can pull directly up versus what we can link to. So, uh, ideally, you know, it would be a one-stop-all-property information, and I think we, as we, um, update systems and upgrade, that'll be something that, you know, we look for in any new connections, but, um, the beautiful thing is that it, it allows you to at least get directly to a link where you can get the information. So it is, it's not immediately there, but it's all there for you to find.
Yes, yeah. No, thanks, I, I think that would be a super helpful thing to sort of get all that information in one place. Um, and as, again, as we're talking about increased liens, et cetera, uh, figuring out how to make that available, especially now that there's a portal that I can't log in to see my constituents' taxes, um, you know, that, that becomes an issue as well. But that might be an issue, a confidentiality thing, so we'll have to figure out that piece. But anyway, just wondering, thank you.
Thank you, and just one.
Do you do an annual report, uh, or is there a section in the annual report? If, if so, can you customize that for each council district?
Um, we don't do an annual report that's specific to Code Map, but if there are specific data points that we, we can discuss offline that you would like, we can look to do that on an annual basis.
Okay.
I'd also like to add that all of the, um, all of the tools that I showed allow you to filter by council district or legislative district. So with the Key Stats Dashboard, you can filter, um, by your specific council district, and I don't know if you caught it, uh, Chairwoman Middleton, but I did a screenshot of the District 6 demographic profile, so our neighborhood data profiles are also aggregated to the council district level.
Thank you. That's a sign you can customize the reports.
Yes, yes.
Any other questions from the committee before we move on? Um, we did not have anyone sign up for questions for this, so we're going to see if there's any hands raised. We're refreshing to check again, and there's no hands raised. Okay, um, there's no amendments. Does, is, before we move and vote this out, are there any questions about this presentation? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Conway. Second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Yes. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill moves the second reader. Thank you again, Kimberly, for that presentation, and, uh, Commissioner and staff for, um, putting that together. And now we're going to move to Bill 22-0106R, Investigational Hearing on Solar Farming. And those that are part of the presentation, yes, please move up. And if you want to, those in the presentation, if you want to try to come together on this side, that could be good. And while they're doing that, I'll just quickly go over the bill for the purpose of inviting representatives from We Solar, the Department of Public Works, the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Planning, Office of Sustainability, the Department of General Services, the Comptroller, the City Administrator, the State Public Service Commission, and the Baltimore Gas and Electric Company to brief the City Council on commercial and residential solar farming, and to assess how solar farming can benefit the citizens of Baltimore City. This bill was introduced on May 16th, 2022, and the bill's sponsor is, um, uh, Council Member Burnett. Council Member Burnett, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and colleagues, um, for having me, uh, on this committee. Um, so I'll, I'll keep it short. Uh, as, as more and more jurisdictions shift their efforts towards clean energy, uh, we must do the same. Jurisdictions across Maryland are investing in commercial and residential solar farming, and it's not just counties that are rich with agricultural landscapes, but jurisdictions like Baltimore County, Howard County, and Prince George's as well. Uh, we wanted to bring this investigational hearing to move Baltimore City in the right direction. There are so many opportunities for us to expand on clean energy, reduce the cost of energy for our residents, and generate revenue from solar farming. Like utilizing rooftops of city-owned buildings to house solar panels, transforming city-owned vacant lots, et cetera. This can be a tool to assist low-income families with opportunities to install solar panels and also benefit from solar farming, uh, land, uh, conversions. Uh, however, we're a little bit behind the curve and must catch up with our neighboring counties. Therefore, we're calling a hearing to get a better understanding of how to put Baltimore on the path to sustainable clean energy. Most recently, the Climate Solutions Bill Act was signed into law, which is SB 528, uh, which focuses on, uh, energy efficiency development and provides investments to jurisdictions seeking to advance their efforts in clean energy, as well as other legislations such as HB 440, uh, which is the Community Solar Energy Generating Systems, Net Energy Metering, and generating capacity, which was sponsored by our own, uh, city delegate, Luke Klipinger. Um, we do have a, a panel, a few panelists today, Madam Chair, um, to, to speak to us about solar farming. Um, we have Crystal Hansley, CEO of We Solar, uh, we have representatives from the Public Service Commission, uh, Department of Planning, and, uh, the Office of Sustainability, uh, the Coalition of the Climate, and representatives here from BG&E, who may be, I think, joining us online, if I recall. Um, so with that, I'll hand it back to you. I do know that our, our folks from the Public Service Commission are a little bit under the time crunch, so if we could start with them, I, I think you should have the list of all the panelists, but if we could start with them, that'd be, that'd be great, uh, because I know they're, they're a little bit behind on time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, so I just want to say with, as far as the mayor's administration and representatives, that definitely a favorable report. Um, I see the Office of Comptroller says, has comments. It's, did, uh, yours is favorable as well? So we did get favorable reports from, um, the City Solicitor, the Office of the Comptroller, Public Works had no objection, Recreation Parks had no objection, um, Planning Department deferred to the Sustainability Commission, uh, and their report was favorable. Um, we don't have anything in writing from the Administrator, and I guess we're going to.
We do have.
We do? Okay. Um, Housing has a favorable report, and General Services, uh, we haven't received, but is that a favorable as well? I'm, that, is that a yes? Okay. So General Services is also favorable. So we'll start with the presenters, um, and in lieu of time, we're going to start with the Maryland Public Service Commission, and all of you, when your area is called, just state who you are and what you do, and then you're, you're on.
Hello, I am Stephanie Bolton, the Director of Consumer Affairs for the State of Maryland Public Service Commission. I apologize for shaking up everybody's order today, um, but one of our teammates does have a time constraint. Uh, I am here today with Lisa Smith, our Legislative Affairs Director. We have Amanda Best, and she is our, um, Senior Advisor to the Commission, and is going to be giving, uh, information a little bit later about, um, the intricacies of our solar program here. I do have a presentation, if it's possible to, um, pull it up on the main screen.
Your name again? Did you sign in to the meeting?
I am signed into the meeting. I, I apologize, I haven't, um, done one of these. Alternately, the presentation is saved on a thumb drive. If anybody else wants to give it a go, Lisa?
Oh, there's Lisa.
Is we?
She was on there. When you pulled it up, I did see Lisa Smith sign in.
So it's not under Stephanie?
Oh, under Maryland PSE, PSE.
What would it be listed under? Because it's not listed under Stephanie's name.
Uh, it might also be under Lisa Smith.
Okay, we do see Lisa Smith. Thank you. We're going to move Lisa Smith up to a panelist. And you can share your screen, Lisa, if you'd like.
Thank you.
While you're doing that, I want to recognize Erin DeGraffan-Reed is, um, online with us, representing the Council President's Office.
Okay, I apologize. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Apologies for the technical difficulties. Again, this is Stephanie Bolton here with the State of Maryland Public Service Commission, and... And we were hoping to tell you a little bit about our team and how we connect when it comes to solar farms and community solar, as well as some other regulatory, some other things that we do within the state of Maryland. So the State of Maryland Public Service Commission, simply said, regulates public service utilities and companies. So that's your gas, your electric, your for-profit water and sewer. Common carriers, so some taxicabs in certain jurisdictions, Uber, Lyft, local phone companies, landline only. So our mission is to ensure safe, reliable, and economic service to the citizens of Maryland in the public transportation and utilities circuits. So some information on where to find us. We are right down the street at Six St. Paul's. And we are able to come and speak on this issue and others within our jurisdiction. On our website, there are a number of reports that can help guide some decision-making on this issue. But I am going to go ahead and turn it over to my colleague Amanda now, given my lack of presentation, and she's kind of the meat and potatoes of what we have to say today.
Thanks, Stephanie, and good afternoon, everyone. Like my colleague was saying, we're here just to chat about kind of, I'm going to address two issues today, kind of the broader state policies around solar, and then dive in a little bit into kind of the different types of solar projects that are available around the state. And so, as was mentioned earlier, obviously, Maryland has some very ambitious climate goals. Most recently, the Climate Solutions Now Act was passed back in the most recent General Assembly session. And Maryland has generally been trying to reach a lot of climate and energy policy goals for many years now. Two of the largest solar policies that we have in the state are the Renewable Portfolio Standard, or the RPS. And that essentially mandates that by 2030, we will have fifty percent of our electricity generated by renewable resources. And of that, at least fourteen and a half percent must be from solar. And the year for that is 2028. In terms of how that works, there's a market where folks will sell their renewable energy credits that can be bought by suppliers. And then that is how the generation mix that ends up into Maryland ends up becoming more renewable incrementally each year. The next policy that you see listed here is net energy metering. Essentially, it is a compensation method that is operated by all of the utilities in the state for customers that elect to install certain types of renewable generation. The main one is solar. We do see a little bit of wind, but mostly solar is what that is comprised of. And so that's another essential. I would view the RPS and the net energy metering as financial tools, right, that customers can use to try and really reap the benefits of solar energy at the customer level. And then that final point is community solar pilot. And that is kind of a little piece of the bigger net energy metering pie, if you will, in terms of, it's a seven-year pilot. It's scheduled to end about in two years, December thirty-first of 2024. And those are the projects that, you know, essentially are trying to allow for solar access to customers that might not be able to install solar on their own properties, right? And so you can sign up with these projects. And again, you would receive some crediting in forms of, you know, on your utility bill for actually participating in these projects.
I missed your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Amanda Best.
Thank you.
Apologies.
For the record.
Yes, absolutely. I think, yes. So we can go on to the types of solar. And so generally, you'll see three main types of solar projects throughout the state. And the first one is rooftop, which I'm sure most folks are familiar with. Obviously, that's where a customer is putting solar panels onto their own property. You know, a little bit of the nuances of that. They can be customer-owned, or there are companies that will do various types of leasing agreements to a customer to put panels onto their property. Can be residential or commercial. And to kind of tie back to those financial tools that we were talking about just a minute ago, rooftop solar is typically eligible for both net metering credits and for solar renewable energy credits, depending on the size of the projects. And so then, the next type is community solar. And these are systems, like I kind of mentioned before, are to really try and benefit folks across all different housing types, especially for folks that really can't physically or financially be able to install solar on their own property. And so the actual project will be located elsewhere. You will then subscribe as a customer to a certain portion of that bigger project. And then you will see the financial benefits on your utility bill via a crediting system. And so, again, these projects are also eligible for both net metering benefits and for solar renewable energy credits as well. And then, just to kind of dive down a little bit into that, as the community solar pilot was instituted by statute, so the Public Service Commission is overseeing implementation of that pilot. Just so that everyone in the audience today is aware, there are currently two community solar projects that are in service in the city. And there are about thirteen that are currently in the pipeline. So we're expecting more to be coming online in the near future.
Is that that one in Back River?
No, so that Back River would probably be, it would not be a community solar project. There, the current two that we have in the system are, there's one in Fells Point. That was actually one of the original projects under the pilot that was up and in service. And the other, it's, when I was trying to kind of look at it on the map, it's, it's a little bit, it's southeast Baltimore, a little bit further east of kind of, if you go east of Canton a little bit, it's kind of in that area, is where the second one that's in service right now.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. And then the final type of solar is utility-scale solar. And these are your biggest projects, right? These are the ones that, in terms of both capacity and land requirements, they are the largest. They are typically always owned by a generation company. And just kind of for more clarification, in Maryland, we do dereg, we have deregulated generation. And what that means is our utilities don't own generation anymore. There's a third party market for that. And so that's why you'll see independent private companies own generation. And those would be the folks that own these types of projects. The Commission typically only sees these for construction purposes, essentially. We have the statutory authority for citing. And so the Certificate of Public Convenience and Necessity is the process that we oversee to actually make sure that these projects meet all of the requirements by the state in terms of environmental and, you know, safety and a variety of other issues to make sure that they can go forward with their projects. But in terms of financial tools, these would also be eligible for solar renewable energy credits. As of right now, there are no utility-scale solar facilities in the city. My guess as to why that is is just probably because you really need a lot of land for these projects. Kind of a ballpark estimate is, for a two-megawatt project, which is the smallest to be considered utility scale, you would need about twenty acres of land for that. So you just, they're just land-intensive projects. And so that's why you probably see these usually more focused in rural areas. But they are certainly doable, there just aren't any right now in the city. And I think with that, we are available for questions. We really appreciate your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's move, any questions? Because I think they have to leave. Any questions through the committee for this particular group? Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You had mentioned that there's thirteen other, I think community solar is the way to go. I think it's really an exciting opportunity for us to, you know, provide our residents with the ability to have lower bills, but not have, always have solar panels on their house, but it would be, you know, elsewhere. And we have a, Madam Chair, you'd be interested in this. We have a town in Prince George's County, Edmiston, that has worked hard to almost be completely off the grid through, through doing community solar, which is super exciting. So my question is where, you mentioned that there are thirteen in the pipeline. Could you tell us where those are going to be?
Sure, yeah. When we were looking, you know, I don't, we're happy to obviously follow up. If there's interest, we can do a little bit more in specifics. But when we were looking, kind of the location, they're actually kind of located all over the city. Yeah. And, you know, in the pipeline, the process right now is the Commission does an initial review of anyone that's interested in terms of applying as a community solar provider. And then that community, once they receive approval from the Commission, would move on to work with the utility to interconnect the project and do kind of the final steps. And so I would say those thirteen are still currently working with the utility, which would be BG&E in this case, to get those projects finalized and actually on the grid delivering electricity.
So you're not at liberty to tell us where yet?
They're not quite that far.
Well, when you are, we'd like to know. Because I think my colleagues and I would be interested in that. Thank you. And also, if you have a chance to, at some point in time, get us the information about how to, if we've got residents interested in being a part of this, how to then get to you all as well would be great. Thanks.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes?
I want to know who is "we."
Oh, that's another group. Oh, I didn't.
No, 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 she said "we."
Oh, go ahead.
I want to know who "we" is. And before you go and make decisions on a map about bringing something to a neighborhood, I think you need to talk to the neighborhood first. Because my colleague just asked you for a list. You say you got thirteen, and you can't tell us who it is. Why?
Well, so the, like I said, the state.
Before you go any further, well, how did you get to Fells Point in southeast then?
Because they're in service, and so they're actually up and.
How did you select them? Did you go talk to the community first, or you said, "We're not going to let you know first"?
No, so these are all owned by third parties. And so developing, you know, solar developing contractors or just general generation companies will go around, they will try and pick locations. Again, we, the state agency, the Public Service Commission, we don't actually regulate generation in that matter. So we're not going out and picking kind of where projects are located. It's really reliant on the private market to make these proposals and then go through the pilot process to, to come up with these projects. So it's at the generation level.
So do you have a criteria on how you pick the next thirteen? I mean, do you pull it out of a hat, a lottery ticket? I mean, how do you, how do you do that?
The process, a quick overview of the process?
Sure. So generally, what happens is every year, there's an application period. And generators are welcome to apply for potential projects under the pilot. And they will, again, they will initially apply for a license number under the Commission. There are certain eligibility requirements. If they meet those, they are then passed on to the utility in the, that oversees the area for where the project's located. And then that company will work with the local utility to get the project through the final stages of the process in terms of interconnecting, so getting the project connected to the grid, and then actually live and operational so that it can generate electricity for customers.
I just got to say one thing. There's a disconnect between the utilities and how they select communities. It really is, and that need to be cleaned up a little bit. Because you can't keep coming to people's neighborhood and say, "We're going to give you some solar energy or farm energy," whatever energy it is. But somebody else is making decisions before you talk to the community. That's the disconnect. That's the disconnect with BG&E right now when they do utility work in neighborhoods, and you don't know nothing about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments for the Public Service Commission?
Madam Chair, do.
Yes, Councilman Burnett?
Thank you. So the question I had is, for the, for these projects, the marketing, like, so obviously, there's a benefit to the customers to have, you know, some sort of credit on their utility bill. How do people find out about it? Like, what's the, the marketing process so people know where to apply or that they are eligible to apply?
Thank you, that's, it's a good question. And so, since these projects are owned and operated by different development companies, they tend to have two just high-level models. Either they will handle the marketing in-house, and they will do it themselves, or sometimes they will work with other companies that also work in the energy retail space. And they will use those to try and market to customers to participate in the projects. There are lists that are available on the utility websites with just kind of generally what projects are in the pipeline and which ones are in service. But I would say that they, these projects, at least right now, are still kind of handling a lot of the marketing on their own.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we're going to go down the list and start with We Solar. Give your name and company and so on. A name so we can get it on, if you have a PowerPoint.
Crystal Hansley, We Solar founder, CEO. I am trying to put.
Moving you up to a presenter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Baltimore City Council members, bill sponsors, city agencies, the administration, and industry leaders, good afternoon. My name is Crystal Hansley, founder and CEO of We Solar, Baltimore's pride and the nation's first Black woman-owned and-led community solar firm. We Solar model is an equitable approach to development and deployment, creating environmental, economic, and social impact for Baltimore City residents. We Solar was founded on the key principles of environmental justice, which is policy, energy security, community economics, and climate mitigation. Launched out of my tiny West Baltimore apartment on Juneteenth, 2020, We Solar is a nationally-recognized firm that has been profiled in Bloomberg News, Vogue Magazine, Black Enterprise, Baltimore City Journal, for its community-centric approach, piloted over a dozen initiatives and projects with multinational partners, Fortune companies, and local organizations. And that was before the passing of the Federal IRA, Inflation Reduction Act, which is currently passed in the United States Congress with heavily incentivized community solar projects, have advised White House officials and DOE officials and other state municipalities across the country. Today, as you hear from leaders, officials, that really sketches out the industry's framework and supply chain from the Public Service Commission, who regulates our utility and Maryland's community solar pilot program that was recently passed in a state legislature in 2015. Our utility BG&E partners, who partner with solar developers, service interconnection and ongoing billing credits for subscribers, to local green banks who finances our solar projects, and our city Office of Sustainability, who directs, engages, and informs citizens of best sustainable practices. As a practitioner and industry leader, I will talk to you today about community solar, its benefits, market examples, updates, and next steps. We Solar is a community solar firm. So how does it work? Community solar projects create greater access to solar energy by allowing people who have not traditionally been able to access solar due to factors like cost, land, space, or unsustainable roofs, to participate in a transition to renewable energy. These are typically off-site locations that are built on brownfields, cap landfills, and commercial buildings. As you may or may not know, eighty percent, oh, yeah, these are just visuals. Eighty percent of households do not have access to solar. Let me repeat that. Eighty percent of American households do not have access to traditional rooftop solar. Community solar creates that opportunity for all households to benefit from the economic resilience. Currently, the savings range from anywhere between ten to sixty percent off their energy costs, with Washington DC leading the nation charge for community solar benefits, eliminating fifty percent of their subscriber's energy cost a month. Once a solar farm is built, subscribers are connected to a farm that directly affects their electricity bill. After the subscriber's portion of the farm receives solar energy, After the subscriber's portion of the farm receives solar energy, the electricity that is generated is sent to the electricity grid of the customer's utility company, which in our case is BG&E. On their electricity bill, customers receive a solar credit for the amount of electricity that was produced by the portion of the solar farms. This means financial savings for the customer and clean energy for the electricity grid. Currently, this is a way for poor and black communities who have never been at the table for clean energy economics to receive those benefits and also an opportunity to develop the assets. That's where the economic and equitable solutions can really benefit Baltimore City residents as well as the small WNBEs like We Solar in this space. The key social and economic environmental include, benefits include, again, customers will save 10% to 60% on their electricity costs. As you may or may not know, BG&E is in the building. I don't know how many households are ready for this winter storm, but there's fine print that says that our energy bills are going up 50% to 30% across the nation. That is going to create a huge hurdle for a lot of families that suffer from energy burden. And right now, it started October 1st. And folks will not receive or have any inkling that that's going to be a problem because they haven't turned on those energy heating systems. And there's going to be a huge shock the moment that those heating systems turn on this winter. I'm going to show industry examples of community solar farms that was locally and produced with state, well, with local private and partner partnerships. Recently, the Oaks landfill, located at 6001 Omni Leighton Road, is owned by the county, Montgomery County, and is closing a cap landfill. This landfill is owned by Montgomery County. And there was a RFP that was a part of the Community Solar Pilot Program here in Maryland, which is almost due to expire in two years. We're already in the sixth year of the seven-year pilot program. That's how behind the ball we are. And millions of dollars of economic and generational wealth has been created for those communities. And Baltimore City residents have not benefited from the equitable portions, I mean, developing and owning those assets. Another example of a landfill community solar project was developed in Prince George's County. This was Maryland's first community solar pilot program that was active about 20, it was 2018, but really didn't turn on in 2019. This was my former company. And as you can see, I am the only black woman in that picture as I'm in a lot of these spaces. 95% of the solar energy space executives are white. Now, has, here's an update of where we are with the BG&E portal. Oh, my PDF.
It looks like you're on protected view. Maybe hit enable editing at the top to be able to use the links.
Oh. Well, I can go to BG&E's website. Because I will show you exactly how much community solar is left in Maryland. And this is really important for the city council to see this. Okay. It's more than white, it's a skinny cat. Okay. So here is the live chart of the capacity for BG&E. Let me just try to... Oh, okay. Okay. So as you can see, I'm trying to see if there's a way to... Oh. Okay. So here's how much community solar. Right now, the pilot program, like, again, was initiated in 2015. There was 305 megawatts that was allocated for the BG&E grid. Out of the 305 megawatts currently, in real time, as you can see, this was updated in 10/11. Knowing that this program is about to expire, we go down to year six. Here's what's left, guys. 11 megawatts for the open category. As we stated, there's 13 projects that's left in the pipeline. So I'm sure that is a part of this reserve. So that, those 13 projects is a part of the 16 that's already maybe filed some preliminary interconnection contracts with the Maryland Service Commission. And this is the open category, meaning that there's no household income restrictions as well as there's lower incentives as it relates to community solar compared to LMI carve-outs in this program, meaning low to moderate income community solar. And there's 37 megawatts that's left. Whereas you have, well, there's none in reserve. But we, again, we only have about two years and it takes about 15 months to really bring a solar project online. So today's ask is really time-sensitive. We have 11 mon, we have 11 megawatts out of 300 megawatts that was initially carved out. And so we would like to have any low-hanging fruit, solar assets, meaning the community. We Solar is owned by community investors. Poor and black people pull their money together and bootstrap community, so We Solar. So we are the community at the table. And out of these 300 megawatts, there has not been a black woman-owned or-led developer in the, in the state of Maryland or even in the nation to really be able to say, "Hey, we're at the table and bringing this type of economics to our neighborhoods." Because once these solar assets are built, that's reoccurring wealth that's being generated in our communities and leaving our communities. Because I'm sure those 13 projects are from out-of-state developers. So here's the ask. We need to really make sure that Baltimore City solar assets can really be a part of the remaining Community Solar Pilot Program. This Community Solar Pilot Program is regulated by the Maryland Public Service Commission. We're in the last year and we have one year left. And even though we have one year left, it takes a lot, or a lot of time, about 15 months to really develop these assets. So if there's any questions, I am able to take them now. Thank you.
Any questions? Or do we want to move on, finish the presentations?
I mean, I can hold off.
Okay. Let's go ahead and finish. And let's go with the Department of Planning and Sustainability. Is second on the list.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be providing an overview of the 2020 greenhouse gas inventory for the city. I am sharing my screen, but I don't see it coming up. Can you all see that? Okay. 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 There's a delay. All right. Great.
You can identify yourself?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, everyone. Ava Richardson, representing the Department of Planning and the Office of Sustainability, Sustainability Director for the city. Today, I'll be providing an overview of the 2022 greenhouse, excuse me, the 2020 greenhouse gas inventory, the purpose of that inventory and what it tells us and how we can use that data. So our initial greenhouse gas inventory, or greenhouse gas target, was set to aim for a 25% reduction by 2020 in the 2012 Climate Action Plan. Earlier this year, the administration updated that goal aiming for carbon neutrality by 2045 with interim goals of a 30% reduction by 20, by 2025 and a 60% reduction by 2030. And those interim targets are relative to 2007 baselines. Greenhouse gas inventories will typically track carbon dioxide, methane, and nitrous oxide, or greenhouse gases, which contribute to the warming of Earth's atmosphere. Inventories of this type do not typically track criteria air pollutants that the EPA reports on, such as particulate matter, ozone, or carbon monoxide. It also does not track toxic metals or volatile organic compounds, but there are several different systems to track these across the state of Maryland as well as in Baltimore. Just a clarification or caveat that I won't be reporting on those today. Our inventory, the emissions for Baltimore's greenhouse gases are attributed to two primary sectors. And that includes stationary energy or buildings, transportation, and waste. And we follow global protocols for community-scale greenhouse gas inventories, which is a global standard for reporting. So, since 2007, we've seen a 23.2% reduction in our emissions. And so that was just shy of our 25% target. So we didn't reach the target, but we came pretty close. And I'll go into some of what that is attributed to. This isn't featured here, but we do, we did see, there has typically been an increase in hydro, wind, and solar or any, or renewable energy sources in terms of where we get our electricity from. However, across the city, less than 1% of our electricity, according to the inventory, was generated from solar energy. So we know we have some, some catching up to do there. This graphic here displays kind of how energy generated from coal has decreased over time in that of nuclear has stayed relatively consistent and natural gas has increased. Much of the emissions reductions that we see in our inventory are due to that kind of, the, the declining use in coal and the increasing use in natural gas. So just to, again, walk folks through, when it comes to the natural gas, that is a huge source of methane. And methane is generally a much more potent greenhouse gas, which leads to much more warming potential. So it is a huge concern when it comes to some of the, the fugitive emissions that happen within our gas system across the city. We saw quite a significant increase, again, in emissions in the transportation sector in 2020. You do have to add the consideration that this was a pandemic year. We were in the height of the pandemic during this time and we're still climbing out. So a lot of the data that we have right now doesn't necessarily reflect current transportation patterns. And we have to keep that in mind. Moving forward, whether or not we maintain these declines in transportation will depend on critical decisions, policy decisions, and behavior change mechanisms that we're aiming for. But we, we are seeing a lot of cities not basing too many decisions off their 2020 greenhouse gas inventory because it is such an outlier. And then for the greenhouse gas emissions, as it relates to the waste sector in particular, roughly 10% of the citywide emissions, 9.5% come from the waste incinerator, brusco, or willow breiter alone, which is, has been quite consistent since 2010, as this graphic displays. And we know that that is a huge issue when it comes to emissions, but also environmental justice and something that we want to see, we, we really do want to address as best as we can. Related to our greenhouse gas inventory is our Climate Action Plan update process. And so, a quick summary of that process. Right now, we are engaging in our Climate Action Plan update, which will include 6,000 unique engagements across the city. And that will lead to an updated Climate Action Plan, which provides a roadmap to our carbon neutrality goals. So really outlining the specific actions that the city will take to reduce emissions. And we know that emissions aren't the only measure or metric that are important in this regard. We're looking at air quality. We're looking at the urban heat island effect as it relates to this plan and the development of it and our engagement as well. So far, we've had roughly 1,700 unique engagements. We have an advisory council made up of community members that have met six times. We've done engagement at different events across the city. We have 418 survey responses from across the city, which try to better understand how climate issues impact residents. And we will have a workup, a workshop coming up this fall that will help feed into some of the, that'll help inform some of the recommendations that we'll have in the final Climate Action Plan. We've had 374 sign-ups for that workshop. Also, when it comes to just in general, some of the goals around both community resiliency as well as expanding access to more renewable energy or solar energy, our resiliency hubs program plays a critical role in that. Some of our hubs are equipped with battery, battery backup energy. And some of this work, some of this solar infrastructure has been supported by grants from the state of Maryland, which we're really excited about. We're looking forward to expanding these types of programs, especially during and after a disaster event or a power outage. It becomes a really critical resource for community members. And last, the Department of General Services has been convening a Buildings and Energy Working Group, for which the co-chairs are here today. Thank you, Julia K. Laws and Kim Rubens for leading that work. But they, the, that particular group did compile a list of assets for, that could potentially be used for rooftop solar. But the, the likelihood that that is actually possible is yet to be determined. DGS has also conducted research into requests for information on solar development for community solar and has spoken with some, in some businesses with, across the industry and is looking into convening stakeholders across the energy, industry to better understand how it is that the city can be more strategic about expanding solar energy and renewable energy generation across the city. And currently, DGS and DPW are collaborating on the development of a, a solar project at the Montebello Plant. So, and that is it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Then we have next Climate Action Fund.
Yes, hi. Madam Chair and members of the committee, thank you so much for having me today. I am, share my screen, but what I want to...
You gotta use the microphone. Is she got a microphone at your desk?
The microphone. Just.
The one behind her.
Who are behind you?
Okay. I didn't see the one over here. Okay. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to, to speak with you today about a, an issue dear and, dear to our hearts, all of us who are here presenting today. And that is how to make sure that lower-wealth communities in Baltimore and elsewhere do not get left out of the clean energy transition that we are, that is underway. I want to tell you, really, I want to tell you a little bit about the Climate Access Fund. But what I want to spend a lot of time doing is, is talking to you about how we can use community solar in particular as an economic development tool in Baltimore City. And now, why is it? There we go. So the Climate Access Fund is a nonprofit green bank and solar developer.
You gotta share your screen if there's something you want to...
Oh, I did share my screen.
It's not showing.
It's not showing. Okay.
We're giving, gotta give it some time. But you can go ahead.
All right. Let me...
Until it boots up, I guess.
Okay. Go back and try again. Entire screen. Oh, share is connecting. It doesn't seem to want to connect.
Still working. But you can go ahead and speak, I guess, until it...
Okay. Sure. While we're waiting for it to connect.
There we go.
There we go. Okay. So now I gotta actually share the screen.
All right.
Okay. So the Climate Access Fund is a nonprofit green bank and solar developer that is based in Baltimore but operates statewide. And our mission really is to make sure that lower-income households do not get left out of the clean energy transition. Just to, to refresh folks' memory, there are really two ways that households can access solar power. One is that they can put solar on their own rooftops and the second is through community solar. Not all states have community solar. We are lucky that we do in Maryland. I will say, the pilot program you have heard is, is expiring at the end of 2024. But there are very big efforts going on in Annapolis. And that's one of the things I would encourage you all to do is to talk to your, the Baltimore City delegations to make sure that this pilot program becomes permanent. The, a green bank, I don't know if everyone knows what a green bank is, but it's basically a financing intermediary that believes that instead of using a dollar of public money in the form of grants, you use that money, you invest it wisely and creatively to leverage more private capital. Solar is about public capital and private capital. Solar is not simply, you're not able to do solar just with private capital. You're certainly not able to reach low-income households without public capital. So green banks take public and nonprofit capital and leverage private capital to make sure it happens. As a green bank and a developer, we offer financial... As a green bank and a developer, we offer financial products that are attractive to solar developers like WeSolar and across Maryland, who offer community solar at a discount to low income households. We also, because we are about filling gaps in the market that are preventing low income households from participating in community solar, we also actually develop projects that no other developers will develop because we are a nonprofit and we access flexible capital. Those projects are the projects that I'm going to explain to you today and where I think the real future for Baltimore City and community solar lies. And that is small projects on rooftops, parking canopies, landfills, right-of-ways, schools, city-owned buildings, rooftops that are smaller than the 2 megawatts and 5 megawatts you heard about. The only way to develop rooftop projects that benefit low income households is by having some additional financing products like the ones that our green bank offers. Third, we advocate for clean energy policies, mostly in Annapolis, where a lot of the energy decisions are made. I will move through this, our mission and vision. I did want to share this quote with you because I think it's really important and sort of right on target. "Community solar is uniquely positioned to aid in America's recovery from the COVID-induced economic recession, especially in hard-hit communities. It provides jobs, both temporary and long-term, lower-cost energy, tax revenue, and lease revenue to landowners, all while helping to address environmental justice." The problem with Maryland's community solar program right now is that most projects are located out in rural areas. They're not located in Baltimore City, so the jobs are not here, and most projects do not benefit low and moderate income households. So, what the Climate Access Fund is focused on is establishing a new kind of neighborhood-centered community solar approach, where the economic benefits of community solar projects are maximized to the community in three ways: discounted electricity bills, shared ownership of the solar asset itself. And that's a really important piece because most community solar projects are financed by investors who are out of state, some who are in-state. But the point being, you can make a lot of money out of community solar projects in the long term. What we're trying to do is figure out a way that lower income households can also share in that wealth creation over time. We've estimated that a project, and I'll show you just a quick video of this project that we're developing in East Baltimore, we estimate that over 25 to 35 years, which is the life of a solar project, it'll save the community $1.6 million in a generation, the folks that are participating. And that's wholly apart from the shared ownership. So, what I'm going to do now is show you just a quick video of a project that we are developing in East Baltimore on the Henderson-Hopkins School. Oop, volume.
Want something that I have to pay anywhere. I think it's a win-win for everyone.
Families are struggling, and I think in particular, in the midst of the COVID pandemic, families are struggling to make ends meet and pay their electricity bills. Solar power is cheaper than fossil fuel-generated power, and we're in a...
The sun is...
Sorry.
I have an opportunity to reduce my energy costs on something that I have to pay anywhere. I think it's a win-win for everyone.
Families are struggling, and I think in particular, in the midst of the COVID pandemic, families are struggling to make ends meet and pay their electricity bills. Solar power is cheaper than fossil fuel-generated power, and we're in a great moment in time when we can develop solar projects anywhere in the country. And so, we're trying to do that right here in East Baltimore. I started the Climate Access Fund because I looked around and saw that not only was the world transitioning to clean renewable energy, but lower income communities were being left out of that transition.
Community solar is where you get virtual energy from a project that is not on your roof, however, is located within your utility area.
All of the power will go to low-income households in the neighborhood. There will also be a job training component, education for the school kids. There will also be a wealth creation component, where community members can participate in the shared ownership of the project itself.
Look at the opportunities that it's going to create for the next generation.
It will be really great to put solar panels on the roof. I know some people around this community maybe struggle with money.
I would feel very better about the energy that we're using, mainly because it's not like dirty energy.
I'm very excited to participate and see where it can go. Not only does it reduce your energy costs, but also it gives the community an opportunity to invest in themselves as well.
All of those things together make this a first-of-its-kind project. I hope that this will be a model that can be replicated by other people, by other companies across the city and across the country.
So, that just, I wanted to share that video with you all to give you a sense of the way that community solar really can be used as a community economic development tool. It doesn't have to just be reduced electricity bills, which is hugely important, but it can be a wealth creation piece, it can be a job creation piece. And Baltimore, I agree, is behind the curve. The good news is, this pilot project is likely to become permanent. You heard me say it right here. And so, we are not out of time yet, but we need to get going. And I had a few, I have four recommendations for the city council based on two challenges. The first challenge is that smaller community solar projects simply cost more money than large community solar projects. The ones that are located in urban areas cost more than if you're just putting them on the ground, period. The second piece is it costs more to serve lower income households because you give a greater discount than market rate households get. So, what this means is that, as I said before, it requires public-private partnership. As Crystal mentioned, the Inflation Reduction Act has just been passed. It has $7 billion, along with $20 billion set aside for green banks, but $7 billion set aside specifically for low-income solar. The catch is, it has to be applied to by states and local governments. We are working with the state of Maryland to try to get them to apply for some of this $7 billion. I would strongly encourage Baltimore City to not let this opportunity, this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, pass you by. So, that is my first very strong recommendation. The money will, can come in the form of low-cost financing and grant capital. So, again, as I said, if we want to see community solar around the city of Baltimore, we need to apply for the funding. Second, again, I would encourage you to speak to your Baltimore City delegation, your colleagues, to make sure that the pilot program becomes permanent. That is not a done deal, but it's likely because there's a lot of interest in it becoming permanent, but not without pressure from folks like yourselves. The second challenge, and then I will, I will close up, is that it's difficult to identify rooftops, parking lots, landfills, the sites where community solar can be built. The sites need to be at least 25,000 square feet. They are not, they cannot be slated for development for the life of the solar project, so that's 25 to 35 years. And the owners of the land need to be committed to the idea of economic, environmental, and social benefits of community solar. There are ways they can do community solar that don't benefit low-income communities. We want to encourage them and find the financial incentives for them to use their space for low-income community solar. So, the two recommendations I have, and this again could be for the city council or city government, Commissioner Kennedy, I see you sitting over there. First, require, and I know this is easy to say and not so easy to enact, but require that 40%, and I picked 40% intentionally because that is the President's Justice 40 Initiative, and the state of Maryland also applies the 40% to a lot of its legislation, require that 40% of solar that is installed on city property be designated for low-income community solar. The city can off-take 60%. Low-income households should off-take 40%. Secondly, incentivize community solar, community solar installation on privately-owned, commercial, industrial rooftops, parking lots, and land. There are a lot of different ways you can incentivize. I leave that up to you all because that's your job, not mine, but that is a really important piece as well, and we're working on that at the state, at the state level. So, with that, I will leave you. Thank you for the opportunity and welcome any questions.
Thank you for the information. And now, BGE, which is online, I think. Hello, Mr. Gupta, do you have a presentation or you're just going to talk about it?
I will just be speaking to a couple of things. I think Danielle was going to provide a quick introduction. And...
Okay, so sorry. I was looking for my mute. I'm looking for my camera. I can't find it at all. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you. I will put on my camera once I find it. I'm sorry about that. For those who don't know me, my name is Danielle Gooden. I am the External Affairs Manager of BG of Baltimore City alongside my colleague, Fabiola. Firstly, I want to apologize that we're not able to stand before you today, but thank you so much, Councilman, for allowing our virtual participation. I'm not going to repeat a lot of what was said here today, right? The presenters before did an amazing job sharing information on the types of solar with definitions and how community solar is pivotal, it's a pivotal step with our climate solutions and clean futures. I will introduce the team that we have here on call today before Tevez kind of takes the baton from me. We have my colleague, Fabiola Tenaro Calinto, who's also an External Affairs Manager for Baltimore City. We have Jim Maraboli, one of our principal engineers, and of course, as you see, Tevez Gupta, he's our Director of Strategy. So, right before I pass that on, I just want to thank, thank you, Councilwoman Burnett, for introducing this bill, right? And your advocacy of powering for a cleaner and more sustainable future here in the city. I think a couple of presenters said before us that this is something beneficial for Baltimore City. And like you, Councilwoman Ramos, solar is indeed amazing and exciting. So, I will pass it off to Tevez as he gives you a high-level discussion on community solar in Baltimore City.
Thank you, Danielle, and Tevez Gupta here. I'll keep it relatively brief. I think as Danielle pointed out, there's been really great information. I would say Amy Best and the PSC representatives that were here laid out generally the types of solar really well, and so there's no need to repeat that. Crystal Hansley and others really laid out well the benefits of community solar specifically and the opportunity that there is in Baltimore, especially to see more development and more access in Baltimore. I did want to spend just a quick minute, making sure that I'm clear for all of you on the utilities' role, especially as it comes to community solar, but even more generally. So, just at the outset, we have to be clear, BGE right now by law is not allowed to develop, own, or operate any type of generation, solar or otherwise. From deregulation in the early, in the late 90s, that was what was decided at that time. Now, there could be opportunity for changing some of that in the future if folks see that there is benefit to having more involvement for the utility in that space in order to drive more of development of certain clean energy resources, but that's not the case right now. So, right now, what our role is, is for these third-party developers like WeSolar, like others that are out there, we've got to be the best partner we can be from an interconnection standpoint as possible, to make that process as easy, as fast as possible. But we're not involved in the development of sites, in the permitting of those sites. All of those are things that the developers themselves take on. And there are challenges in that space, as I'm sure any developer, including Crystal, would probably tell you that it is not for the faint of heart. So, our role in specifically in community solar then is implementing the legislatively required demonstration or pilot program around community solar, which, you know, right now has a relatively large cap. There's still room there, but it is coming to, coming to a close in terms of year seven coming up on us quickly, too. But we're managing that year to year. We're managing the subscriber organizations, which is what they call the developers of these projects, that are then going out and marketing to customers to become subscribers. So, you know, again, that was well, well-established earlier today. BGE is not going out and recruiting customers. If customers come to our website, there's some information there, but it is up to those third-party developers to market to customers the opportunity to take advantage of community solar. We do everything that we can to support it, and we do support community solar in all other forms of clean generation, especially as we're now in the midst of implementing the state's ambitious goals around the Climate Solutions Now Act, right? Particularly getting to, getting to 60% reduction in carbon by 2031. That's a very aggressive goal, very early in time, and it's going to take all hands on deck for us to all meet that requirement. And then as well as net zero by 2045. And so, we're committed to that, and we're committed to finding innovative ways to do that, partnering with the types of folks that are in this room, presenting additional opportunities, whether it be from a funding perspective, from a community development perspective, or otherwise. We definitely want to be a partner, as good a partner as we can be in all of that. Now, I did want to then touch on, give you a sense of how much solar there is in the city from our perspective, what we're seeing, and how much solar, how many solar subscribers there are in community solar programs. Let's start just with the capacity of solar that's there in the city. Right now, there are, in terms of net metering customers in the city, and again, Amanda Best laid out for you what net metering is, there is a little over 11 megawatts, 11.24 megawatts of net-metered solar within Baltimore City limits, and that accounts for almost 8,000 customers, a little over 7,700 customers that are net-metering generation. And that's inclusive of community solar if that community solar is located in Baltimore City. So, total generation interconnected in BG's system for net metering is 419 megawatts. So, you know, that Baltimore City portion, that little bit over 11 megawatts is, you know, a fraction of that 419 megawatts across our territory. Some of that has to do with the capacity for rooftop solar in the city as well and the availability of land potentially for community solar, too. When you talk about community solar, subscribers do not have to be located in the same city in which the solar generation is located. That solar just has to be in BGE territory, and subscribers can be anywhere in BGE territory. So, currently, we have almost 6,000 subscribers in our community solar programs or BG customers that are taking advantage of community solar, and there's over 1,000 customers in Baltimore City within that 6,000 or so customers that are taking advantage of community solar. So, that's actually, if you look at kind of the ratio, that's a better number, I would say, in terms of the ratio of megawatts of total solar versus megawatts that are in the city. You know, there's a good number of customers within the city that are taking advantage of community solar. There's still, there's still capacity there. There's still room to go, as Crystal, for instance, pointed out, and there's, there's an opportunity that the city can certainly take advantage of. Now, I do also want to speak very briefly then about net metering. I think the commission pointed out that the net metering cap across the state is 3,000 megawatts. So, that's the amount of customer capacity that can take advantage of net metering. Now, net metering, mind you, provides customers an incentive to install solar that offsets their usage. So, their bill from BGE will be offset by the amount of energy that they produce from their solar. The challenge with net metering is that somebody is paying for that offset, and it's all of those customers that aren't taking advantage of solar, either because they can't take advantage of it, or they don't have a home that has a rooftop that can support solar, or they're just, they don't have the financial wherewithal to do so. or otherwise net metered solar and having all other ratepayers pay for it. So we don't know that that's the long-term solution. And right now, again, there's a 3,000-megawatt cap on net metering. We're not near that cap yet. But we do think that we have to be thinking as a state about what's the right incentive going forward that's not going to penalize those that cannot take advantage of net metered solar on behalf of those that can. Now, mind you, community solar is one of the ways that you can create some equity in that because that does give opportunity to people, for instance, in Baltimore City to take advantage of solar and net metering without necessarily having a rooftop that can support solar. So that is one of the methods of offsetting some of that equity challenge. But long-term, we should be thinking about, are there other policies that we can consider beyond net metering once that cap is hit in the state? And again, we're not near that cap just yet. With that, we're here to take questions as well. Jim is probably our technical expert, and he's happy if you have any technical questions. You know, otherwise, I'm happy to answer your questions as well.
Thank you. And I think that ends it with the presentations. Oh, are there anything else from BGE? Danielle, I saw this look.
No.
It's probably something I said. It was being conveyed.
No, not at all. Madam Chair, Vice President Middleton, we are all good here. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from the committee at this point? We'll move on to testimony.
I had a couple of questions.
And yes, Councilman Burnett, sponsor of the bill.
Thank you. So I'll keep them quick because I know we've been here for a while. The first question I had was, so there's obviously, one, I just want to thank the presenters. I think this has been incredibly informative for all of us, and so thank you for taking your time to do this for us. The first question I had was for MoGR or the CEO's office. So obviously, there's an opportunity here to apply for funding at the state level. Are you aware if the administration is taking advantage of this program?
Adam Abadear, Mayor's Office of Government Relations. We'll have to check, Councilman, and get back to you as to the status of that particular grant opportunity.
Thank you.
Sorry, Lynn Heller again. I can answer that. I don't believe the city is taking advantage, at least at this point, of available future funds from the Inflation Reduction Act. Was that your question?
Yes.
Yep. And I can...
I'm not running the hearing, sorry. Hands going up. Yeah, I think we have Public Service Commission, and if you wanted to respond, either.
Oh, thank you. Lisa Smith with the Maryland Public Service Commission. I just wanted to mention that we shared a fact sheet with the committee, and there's a link that goes to the Maryland Energy, MEA, the Energy Administration, which is our sister agency that they administer a lot of those grants and will be administering some of the pass-throughs. So there's a link there to go to their website and go to them directly and see what's available if any of you'd like to check it out.
I confirm it was sent to our emails.
Ava Richardson, Sustainability Director for the city. In our office, we did have one of our colleagues submitted a $7 million grant to support microgrids across the city associated with our Community Resiliency Help Program. We're also working on another workforce development project related to solar that is a part of the IIJA packet of funding in looking at other funding opportunities. And so just a clarification, a lot of these funding opportunities, some of them have yet to be announced, but they are coming from different federal agencies. And so as the funding opportunity announcements are released and we are looking into them, some of them don't actually apply or may not necessarily be compatible with kind of what our needs or capacity is in the city. So yes, there's like a lot of funding available, but in terms of the actual grant opportunities that are accessible and available to the city, we'll see what that looks like as time moves on.
Thank you. The next question I had, so it was mentioned in multiple presentations that there may be challenges with infrastructure in Baltimore as far as large swaths of land. Commissioner Kennedy, can you talk about the tools that DHCD may have at our availability to acquire lots or acquire space? I mean, we have a ton of vacant property, vacant lots throughout the city of Baltimore. Obviously, there could be an opportunity here.
Yeah, absolutely. So historically, it has been the case that, you know, community solar, especially ground mount systems, is definitely hindered by the available land in Baltimore. There's, you know, when communities look, they see land, but when you look on CodMap, as we talked about earlier today in the hearing, you will see on CodMap that it's a checkerboard pattern of that land where the city actually doesn't own a significant amount of that because we've been able to do demolition through due process, demolish the property, then a lien goes on the property for the amount of that demolition. So what we have now and what we are doing analysis for in different areas across the city is utilizing in rem, judicial in rem foreclosure, to assist us with acquisition of those lots because that will be a way to help us to actually end up with city-owned larger portions of land that could be used for community solar installations, green network, you know, there's a lot of future development, et cetera, working with communities. But we're going to be able to, in the future, hopefully, you know, sooner than later, actually have more available land for community solar installations.
Thank you.
Councilman Stokes, you had a question?
I just have a question. I know it's in Councilman Glover's district. He wasn't here. How was y'all able to pick Henderson-Hopkins as one of your projects?
The school administration was very interested. They actually already have solar on their roof that was installed in 2016 by Constellation Energy. That goes to the school operations, but they were very, because they're a community school, they were very interested in the mission of having 100% of the power in this new solar array go to their students and staff and their families.
So are y'all looking at other schools to actually?
Absolutely. I mean, any rooftop that is at least 25,000 square feet, we're absolutely looking to finance, to work with other developers, the community at large.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I see we have one person that has signed up to testify. And just to remind everybody, please stay on topic. We're into our, going over our third hour here. Ms. Selsa, did you want to testify on this bill as well?
In the 12-step programs, it talks about how we try to have an easier, softer way. And when you compartmentalize everything, you don't get to any kind of holistic solution. There's farmers, and there's hunters and gatherers. And when you have different departments, those are like farmers, neat little rows. Hunters and gatherers, they go everywhere to try to get food. And they learn more about the land and where they live than farmers who are just so focused on having those rows straight. So we need land to grow vegetation and trees. We are urban heat island. We have to save Baltimore. And solar, we're not California, we're not Arizona, we're not Oregon. I lived in Oregon for nine years, in Portland, Oregon. I lived 15 years, I mean, I'm sorry. I lived nine years in Portland, Oregon, and six years in Berkeley, California. So this is where solar works. Oregon has a lot of desert and has a lot more light than we do because of the curvature of the earth. Just like on Shark Tank, often the angel investors are really impressed with the person, but they're not impressed with the product, and they do not invest. And it's not based on your skin color or what you look like or any sacrifice that you made. Some people come in and have mortgaged their house for the product, but it's still not right. There is a place for solar, but not the place for solar. I've been living and breathing this for almost six months now. Let's call what BGE, there's only letters, it's actually Exelon. It's a company that is based in Illinois, a multi-billion dollar company. And we're glad to show the maps. Who couldn't get a deal with NRG to buy in 2000 and withdrew in 2009, which is a lot of Texas. So decided to come to the East Coast and start picking off companies. Somehow, we have on the ballot voting in November, question E, which is saying, shall we prohibit or shall we allow privatization and of our conduit system? Where you go on the sidewalk, see DPW conduit. And that is the absolute end of Baltimore City. It means everything, all the wires underneath, all the electric rails, all the...
Could you kind of wrap up with a final statement?
Above, when they're saying we could be more invested, that is exactly what they're saying. We want to own the whole thing.
Could you wrap up with one final sentence?
No, these people have had all this trouble. We have, we have many, many other types of, we need carbon farming. That is much better. You put solar, and there's nothing underneath going on in the land. But using agro, an agro system where you go to people who are growing grapes, growing raspberries, they have chickens. The chickens can feed in between, and you can have above farming. Like I'm saying, there's a place, not the place. So there's opportunity, putting them on the landfills, absolutely, but not on brownfields. Because I personally lived in Portland, 10 yards from the train, Union Station, which was a brownfield. It was a toxic area where, you know, with the train industry.
We understand your point in what you're trying to say.
No, you do not understand my point. We're paying too much...
Ms. Selsa.
For, we're paying too much.
Please, could you just wrap it up with one final?
No, I'm representing the public. And the public is well over 590,000 people. And you need to answer, why is this on this ballot measure on the ballot?
I'm asking a final statement.
Why incineration and... ...gasification? Why you allow coal to come from West Virginia to make money so that it can be exported? Why, why Exelon makes nuclear energy? We're using nuclear energy, which is toxic. All the toxic, they have to go somewhere. All the barrels have to go somewhere. It's not clean energy. Natural gas, there's no such thing as natural gas.
Take a minute and just calm down.
Solar, you can, it only nighttime.
We definitely have your point, but we have to move on, okay?
The graffiti, bird estermin, freezing rain, sleet, snow, ice, cloudy...
Ms. Selsa.
...air pollution, solar... Wind, wind was cuckoo. Wind works anytime during night. ...scorch you out, period. I'm ash three three come, and I'm really being nice, okay? I'm not trying to be mean. Please allow me to continue.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
I'm not done yet. There's time. Stop, stop, stop! Stop, they slow up the geothermal which we can use. There's low... You haven't wanted to talk to me for a year and a half now.
She knows her. Officer, she knows her.
Higher power. This is like, the whole thing with low income is you never talk to any of us. You just put things and choose one way because solar panels only last, those 25, they degrade the moment you put them on. There is... No, let me finish. Let me finish because I'm not even reading this. I'm already carrier picking everything. Stop, stop! No, it's my time with the microphone. I have 50 degrees of life that I have that's never got a chance to talk.
We have your written testimony, so please, we have to move on.
...works...
We have to move on.
...day. We need the...
Ms. Selsa.
...supporting jump up to use... We need higher power to utilize the geothermal, and then everybody gets heat, everybody gets ... Stop it, stop it! Everybody gets heat, everybody gets... Stop! Come on, let's have a speed there. It's time to go, come on. All the streets get cold, all the streets get, all the streets get cold, all the, everybody gets air conditioning. You can use the heat of the earth. Stop, it's 50, consistently about 50%. Stop! 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 You're gonna ruin it! You're gonna ruin Baltimore!
I'm gonna, we're gonna recess for three minutes, and then we'll come back quickly to do our vote.
Stop! Stop! Stop it! Stop!
Okay, we are reconvening after a short recess, and I think we have one more in-person testimony if you want to come up and state your name and give your testimony, and this is on the solar bill number 220106R.
Good afternoon. I promise you, I will not be that exciting, and I'm going to get straight to the point and stay on topic. My name is Kimberly Armstrong, and I have worked in the environmental and renewable energy sector for almost 10 years now. And I'm also a Baltimore City resident, so I've worked with Lynn Heller, I've worked with Crystal Hansley, WeSolar. And so I'm a big proponent of community solar. And I have worked across the state, and I am so glad and excited to see community solar finally start to come to Baltimore because a lot of other counties around us are like light-years away from where we are, especially Montgomery County. Montgomery County is very progressive, and one of the reasons... Montgomery County is very progressive, and one of the reasons why they're so progressive is because they have a broad reach in community outreach. So they have, you know, from schools to the Public Service Commission, to all these different other entities. Also, they have a big green initiative. So I am very supportive, in support of this community solar coming to Baltimore. And please look at tapping into the state resources. And so as I heard Mr. Stokes mention earlier today about the disconnect, a lot of times there can be a disconnect between the state and the local levels, and really not knowing a lot of the resources that we can tap into, because there is, since this IRA Act has come out, it's a lot of money, and people are already making plans to put their hands in the kitty. I'm telling you that right now. I was on a call earlier today around environmental justice with Mr. Gupta. So I'm on, I'm in a lot of spaces and a lot of arenas where I hear a whole lot of things. And I'm telling you, even though the money has not come down the pipe yet, they making plans for it. They already got work groups going on. I was a part of the Public Service Commission about the pilot program before it even became a pilot program. So I've been in this arena for a very long time. So I'm in a space sometimes where I'm always trying to give the community a voice. So I like to also give a shout-out to my councilman, Mr. Tony Glover, who is always looking out for the people. And also, I know that Lynn has a project with Hopkins-Henderson, and I know you saw me on the video, and so I also have solar on my home, so I'm just here to say is that I'm not just about talking, but I'm also about walking. And as we move into this space, please think about putting in resources for community education, because that's going to have to be a big component in educating the community as well as councilpeople and our legislatures. We have a whole new group of legislatures coming in now that need to be educated as well. So as we go on this journey, please think about the resources that need to go back into the community to help the community understand how they can participate and also be a part of this, these projects, and also in the economic development of it and workforce development. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. You gave a great perspective. And we're checking real quick to make sure there's no call, hands raised. We don't see any hands raised, no callers. And I want to thank everyone that stood the 3 hours and 15 minutes for this hearing, this last hearing, waiting for this investigational hearing of solar farming. Thank you, councilmember sponsor, Burnett, for bringing this issue to the city's attention, and a lot to think about and a time-sensitive thing for, we got to deal with equity, equality, investment, investing for investment with our Black and Brown communities. We've heard that this has been, this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing that we, or project that we really need to be involved in, so we really appreciate this. And now, at this time, do we have any final words from the sponsor before we take our vote?
I just, again, I want to thank the advocates, the folks that are working on the ground every day, for making time to join us today. I know it's been a long hearing to educate the community. I'm looking forward to continuing to partner and push the word out, and I already see cards being exchanged so we can expand into different council districts. So I'm excited about the future of this, and thank you, Madam Chair, for hosting us today to brief the council on this important topic.
Committee members, on that note, do I have a motion to move?
So moved.
So moved by Conway, and that was second by Glover?
Yes.
Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock is a yes. Councilman Conway is a yes. Councilman Dorsey is absent. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Is a yes. Councilwoman Ramos, absent. Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader, and again, we can't thank you enough for staying the amount of time to hear this bill. This bill, this hearing is adjourned.